Here he is.
Nice, Jack.
Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of March 16th, 2023 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Driveaway, New Jersey. Statement of compliance, setting forth date, time, and location, was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being read adjourned. Tonight, we have some very special guests with us. We have Troop 192 of the Boy Scouts. The Wayne Board of Education and District Administration would like to welcome you all tonight as our special guests, Scout Troop 192, to our Board of Education meeting. Boy Scout Troop 192 is based in McLehart of Mary Church in Wayne. In order to meet the requirements of their communications merit badge and citizenship and the community merit badge, scouts are required to attend a public meeting where they can actively listen and take careful notes of each point of view that is expressed. They will in turn choose one of the issues that are expressed at this meeting where there is a difference of opinion. After the meeting, they will explain to their counselor why they agree with one opinion more than the other and one that was expressed tonight. I thank you for joining us, and at this time, I would like to ask Scout Master Jim Petrekka and Senior Patrol Leader Gavin Eckert to assist us by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, guys. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
So this evening, we'd like to get started with our recognition program. So April is National School Library Month. April 23rd to 29th, we celebrate National School Library Week. The 2023 theme for National Library Week is there's more to the story, and it promotes the ideas that libraries are full of stories in a variety of formats from picture books to large print, audiobooks, ebooks, and more. Also, on April 4th each year, National School Librarian Day recognizes the professionals who keep the school library in working order. School librarians spend long hours keeping libraries organized. They're dedicated to helping children find the resources they need to keep learning. School librarians are the people who create an environment where students can learn every day of the year. Their work is an impressive accomplishment. Our school librarians provide guidance and expose our youth not only to texts, print, media, and literature, but to digital resources and technology as well. These resources also connect them to libraries around the world. A school librarian's ability to manage scores of media and a school full of students with numerous projects and schedules is astounding. Thank you to all of our school media specialists for their excellent work in making our libraries some of the very best school libraries in New Jersey. And at this time, I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Reichman. She'll be reading the proclamation, which can also be found as Agenda Item K1 on page five.
Whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas, information, and whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part or the instructional program of the school, and whereas the Wayne Board of Education has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources, new technologies, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student, and whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools, and whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education, and whereas the school librarians of Wayne Township Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wayne Township Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2023 as the School Library Month in all the public schools, and calls upon administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month.
Also in our recognition program, April 3rd to 7th is National Assistant Principal Week. So we are so grateful for the enormous contributions of our Wayne Schools Assistant Principals who make each and every day special for our students. We're so proud of each of them and appreciate their leadership and their unwavering commitment to our schools. Okay, let's go to the administrative summary. So I'm going to keep my report brief, recognizing that we have two presentations, our student representative reports, as well as multiple committee reports. So as mentioned before, tonight, we have, we're going to be reporting the outcomes of our Special Education Comprehensive Needs Assessment, which is part of our district goal for this year. In addition, Mr. Moffett will be presenting information about the 23-24 budget. We're excited to announce that the Wayne Education Foundation is holding its second Denim and Diamonds themed magical gala at the Brownstone House on Tuesday, March 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. This year's event will be featuring the extreme magic of Eric Wilzig, an award-winning illusionist who has been on America's Got Talent and Live with Jimmy Fallon. All proceeds will benefit the Wayne Township Public Schools. The cost of the ticket is $75 for the general public and $60 for district employees. The flyer will also be included in this newsletter coming out on Friday. You can form your own tables, and also each school, reaching a minimum of 20 gala attendees, will receive a $1,000 unrestricted grant from the Wayne Education Foundation. Additional information, as I mentioned, will be included in this week's newsletter. For the HIB report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public Schools. There were 17 incidents of HIB investigated since my last report, and seven of those cases were found to be actual cases of HIB. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Now go to our student reps.
Congratulations to the winners at the NJFBLA State Competition. First place was won by Shannak Sony in Data Analysis. The top three winners were Sebastian Garcia in Graphic Design, Nicholas Logregate in Sales Presentation, and Juliet Lauren in Introduction to Public Speaking. On Friday, March 3rd, 27 Wayne Hills Leo Club members ventured into the Big Apple for Lions Day with the United Nations. After picking up registration materials at a nearby hotel, Leos walked through the city to the United Nations Building and passed through security to join other Leos and Lions in an assembly room on the third floor of the UN. Here, they heard various speakers on many subjects, including wellness, nutrition, and food insecurity around the world, and what Leos and Lions can do to help. After the meeting, Leos explored the exhibits and artwork on the ground floor before grabbing lunch to go from a sandwich shop. A great time was had by all. The Wayne Hills Counseling Department is planning to host its first Career Fair on Friday, March 24th. The purpose of this fair is to help our students develop a better understanding of their future post-secondary and career options. Parents, teachers, and staff, community leaders, career development specialists, higher education representatives, local business professionals, and local retirees/volunteers are all welcome to offer their expertise, insight, and experiences. The event will take place in the Wayne Hills Gifford Gym from 10:20 a.m. to 11:20 a.m. The Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard is enjoying a successful and exciting season in the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Networks Scholastic AA Category. The guard was recently promoted to this class of competition due to their experience, technique, and level of achievement. The Wayne Hills Symphonic Band will compete next week in the North Jersey School Music Association's Region One Concert Band Festival. The event is scheduled for Tuesday, the 21st, and features bands from all over northern New Jersey. The Patriot V Instrumental Ensemble performed at the Sunrise Senior Center on Tuesday, the 14th. The student musicians provided music and entertainment for the members of our Wayne community who reside there. The Wayne Hills Student Dance Association Show was held on March 9th, 10th, and 11th. SDA 2023, SDA on Mount Olympus, was a huge success. The winner this year was the white team, led by Ava Yanuzi. White Jazz was the first-place routine. The captains were Sidney Helzer and Isabella Catania. Second place went to Maroon Jazz, captains Jaden Niesensen and Michaela Severit. Third place went to Maroon Tap, captains Gavin Garolis Bechtold and Gia Chacon. The maroon team was led by Mia Carrar. Our president was Rachel Rotis and Vice President Mia Rivera. These two young ladies oversaw the show and were a part of every behind-the-scenes detail. Congratulations to all of the dancers of both white and maroon for a memorable show. Thank you.
This month, Wayne Valley hosted the 15th Student Culinary Competition between Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley. Attendees tasted 15 courses from five different themed cuisines and voted for their personal favorites. The themes were Cuban Cuisine, Nintendo Land, Food Truck International, Taste of Asia, and Studio Ghibli/Japanese. All proceeds went to the Consumer Sciences Scholarships for both high schools, Valley's Ed Grob/Agnes Horner Scholarship, and Hills' Consumer Science Scholarship. Wayne Valley held its first showcase, in which the dance team, jazz band, choir, art class, and photography class showed off their talents. There were performances from the dance team, jazz band, and choir, and displays from the photography and art classes. Wayne Valley alumni, America's Got Talent performer, and the CW's Master of Illusion performer, Michael Turco, returned to Wayne Valley not only to put on a magic show, but also to speak about his experience with cancer, to highlight the work of Kiki Ferguson and Jess Capadonna. These girls are candidates for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's 2023 Student Visionaries of the Year Scholarship, and the showcase was meant to raise support for their mission as well as Valley's various arts programs. Valley welcomed Dr. Matt Bellas for an assembly on how to achieve a natural high. The psychologist and comedian highlighted the issues of unhealthy coping mechanisms, such as the use of drugs or alcohol, while also keeping the mood light and offering healthier ways of coping. Wayne Valley's first Spirit Week this year happened the week of March 10th. Its theme was Night at the Movies, and each grade was assigned a different animated movie to represent. Shirts were made with each grade's respective movie, and students wore them at the end of the week in the pep rally. There were games of musical chairs, Hungry Hippos, Who's the Fastest, and games of tug-of-war between grade levels, with even a teacher team participating. In support of Nolan Penya's Fight Against Cancer, the Wayne Valley Track Team helped Anthony Wayne Middle School to organize a Walkathon and gather donations for Nolan. The Walkathon was hosted on the Wayne Valley Track, and many supporters showed up to give Nolan their encouragement. Thank you to everyone who participated in the Walkathon and who helped run and organize the event. Congratulations to the Wayne Valley cheer and dance teams for becoming state champions this month. The dance team won first place in the state championship in Varsity Jazz and second in Varsity Palm. Congratulations to Shawn Matthews, who made it to the New Balance Indoor Track and Field Nationals. He broke the 3,200 school record, which has been held since 2006. He placed first in his heat and 11th overall out of 75 runners. Winston Calvo also qualified for the Meet of Champions with his personal best performance at the Indoor Track and Field Group Three Championships in the shotput competition of 51 feet 8 inches. Sarah Rodriguez broke not only her own school record, but also a state record at the 2023 NJSIAA Girl Swimming Meet of Champions. She placed second with her time of 53.53 seconds at the Meet of Champions, and she placed third in the 200 Free with a time of 150.79 seconds. Congratulations to Sarah. Valley's Boys 200 Free Relay Team also broke their own school record at the 2023 NJSIAA Boys Swimming Meet of Champions. They made it to the top 24 in the state with their time of 1 minute 31 seconds and 6 milliseconds. Congratulations to Zach Lee, Jake Ryan, Max Carter, and Matt Piasentini for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to open the meeting for public comment on the superintendent's contract. This portion of the meeting will be open to citizens for comment on the superintendent's contract.
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. This portion of the meeting is open for comment on the superintendent's contract. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public at this point. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Giordano.
Good evening, members of the board. Michael Goddessman, Independence Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. At the time of review of the superintendent's contract, it's a good idea to look at what his accomplishments have been since he's been here since 2015. He took over after years of revolving door superintendents. He navigated the district through years of underfunding by the state while being fiscally responsible, created in-house professional development center, saving the district tens of thousands annually, started the K-Rap program to offer solutions to working parents until full-day K could be done, started the early childhood center, not only to serve students in need of early intervention, but also create revenue as a regular education pre-K option, brought in energy savings improvements, not only upgrading our facilities district-wide, but to save us money on the cost of energy for years to come. Along with the business administrator, provided fiscally sound budget and properly funded reserves to keep our district facilities in the best condition possible without overburdening the taxpayer despite years of insufficient funding from the state, and finally brought full-day kindergarten to our schools when the money was available through the uptick in state funding from our current governor and legislature. He also created an in-house mentorship program for employees seeking to move up in their careers, allowing us to promote from within, and he continues to provide fair contracts with all employees and create a climate to attract the best and brightest teachers as well as administration. And he was honored by his own peers, named the Passaic County Superintendent of the Year for 2122. So why do we need to extend this contract? Because it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to find someone of his caliber to replace him. Because there's an extreme shortage of superintendent candidates in New Jersey. It's currently a seller's market. So do we want to risk having no superintendent or paying an interim superintendent on a per diem basis that will cost the district an enormous amount of money? Many districts currently have interim superintendents because they cannot find replacement, and this causes instability. What will be the cost of a search for a new superintendent? Will we be able to find someone to take his place at a similar salary? And superintendents talk to each other. Do we want to take the risk that the Wayne school system will be labeled as hostile to superintendents? We need consistency, continuity, and professionalism, and we have that in our current superintendent, Dr. Toback. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. Mark Faber, Wayne resident. Dr. Toback, I could honestly tell you, and with the most respect, I would not want to be sitting in your job. I know I couldn't do it, and honestly, you have more people that are trying to be your bosses than anybody else out there. You have the public, you have the board. You have the board, you have the citizens, you have the union, so I can totally understand where you're sitting, you know, the problems that you face. My only issue with the renewal of the contract is this. While I don't doubt or question any of your achievements that we have, what I am concerned about are some of the big issues that we have and we still face, and the plans to deal with them. So the two things that I'm predominantly concerned, well, three things. First would be the issue of the special ed programs. The fact that parents are being told to go and file lawsuits to get responses and get their children what they need is very problematic. The second thing that I'm concerned about would be bullying. I have had personal experience with, you know, multiple children in my family now that have experienced bullying on multiple occasions, and the process that they have to go through and the lack of consequences in the school and this drawn-out process has led to seven months of issues for one of my daughters, and there were no, you know, no consequences to any of the children. It was all about peace paths and contracts, and the next day, it goes back to what it was. The third thing I'm concerned about are the drop in grades. Now, I understand that we're saying that this has a lot to do with, you know, COVID and the state, you know, we're doing better than most of the state. Those things, in my opinion, don't really tell me much because the state ranking has dropped tremendously as well. So the fact that we are doing better than the majority of the state doesn't really make myself or many of the parents feel better about where we stand. So what my preference would be, would be to hold off on the execution of the contract until we can have some concrete, measurable criteria to improve in the areas that I've mentioned or areas that are of concern to other people. I believe you probably are, without a doubt, the most qualified, and you have the capabilities to bring the school to where it needs to be. I would just like to see something more concrete as to how we're going to achieve that in the next year, and then have some measurements against what your plan is, against what we actually do achieve. Now, the other thing I would mention is I believe that voting on the contract is not acceptable because we've started a general meeting, and I believe there has to be a separate hearing, public hearing held, and it can't be done during this meeting. So just put that out there, because we already did some of the agenda items on the regular meeting. I would just look into that to make sure that it's all done legally and legitimately.
I just have a question also in that line. The New Jersey Revised Statutes Title 18A, colon 11-11, Public Notice Required for Alteration of Contract Terms of Certain Employees. Public notice required, it says, "A Board of Education shall not renegotiate, extend, amend, or otherwise alter the terms of a contract with a superintendent of schools, assistant superintendent of schools, or school business administrator unless notice is provided to the public at least 30 days prior to the scheduled action by the Board. The Board shall also hold a public hearing and shall not take any action on the matter until the hearing has been held. The Board shall provide the public with at least 10 days' notice of this public hearing." So my question is, if there's a public hearing regarding the renegotiation of the contract, how can the parents or any residents have any substantive questions and concerns expressed if we don't have a copy of the contract to review? That's impossible. It just seems like you're just giving us a courtesy to say, notice was filed, we're here, but when I just looked at the agenda, it said that it's going to be, what I think I read was that it's being approved. But then, how is that? That just doesn't seem like it's following suit with the statutes that are here. So if you can explain that and help us to understand if you're even permitted to vote tonight. Thank you.
Roger Gunnels, Wayne, 22 Lowly. You know, we, all the parents here, you know, we sat here for months and months and months and talked about subject matter that our kids shouldn't even be exposed to. We went round and round and round. We, you know, we fought tooth and nail, and I just think it's time for a new direction. I mean, Mr. Toback, nothing against you. You do a job like Mark was saying, that is a very thankless job, but I think just for the subject matter at hand, just what we're talking about, just how some of the stuff that even, I mean, it blows my mind that some of the stuff that we were talking about even made it to the point of discussion, let alone, are we going to vote on to teach, allow second graders to learn masturbation? That was a point of concern, right? That was something we talked about, right? What world are we living in? And who, and, you know, I mean, Catherine, you can shake your head all you want, but that's not helping anything. So there's just so many things that us parents have discussed and tried to get our kids on the right track, right? With academics only, right? We know they're going to teach kids racism, the CRT, and all that stuff. Why would we even be talking about that? Let's talk about academics. What's going to help our kids grow to be productive members of society? It's not a social experiment, right? We're not here to teach our kids how to be, that's definitely not the school's job. That's the parent's job, right? And so we want our schools to be a place where kids can learn, right? Not a place, and that, and I don't feel, from a parent's perspective, I don't feel that's happened, and again, nothing to Mr. Toback, I don't think it's happened well under his oversight. All right? I just don't. And to Mark's point regarding bullying, I'll say one thing regarding bullying in schools. Every bully's got a plan till they're punched in the mouth. Make sure that we don't get to the point where kids get their face beaten because they're afraid to fight back, because that will, that will hold, that child will hold on to that beating they took for the rest of their life. When the bully, look, bullies are little criminals, right? They're just little criminals. I call them 25 for life, because that's what's going to happen to them, right? Right? So they're just little criminals running around. And if you don't give a child the opportunity to punch him in the mouth, and don't penalize that child who defends themselves, do not. Absolutely not. Because here's the thing, I'm prior service, right? What happened on 9/11? We went back over that, we punched him right back in the mouth. Matter of fact, we punched him a whole bunch. So how do you explain us, how are we able to do that, but then we teach a child you can't? That's wrong. That's wrong. So the whole bullying thing, if that's a problem in schools, there's one fix for that. Make sure kids can punch somebody in the mouth when they feel like they need to. Done.
Janine Wayne. I came here to talk about the contract also, which I did Oprah to see if I could get a copy of it, and I couldn't. You can't hear me? Well, okay, I'll hold it. So I did Oprah the contract, but I got a copy of last year's, or his last one. Janine Martucci, Wayne. Again, I Oprah'd it, but I didn't get a copy of it. I got a copy of last year's. So in order for me to ask questions or have any kind of a discussion on the contract that's being approved now, I thought that we should actually have a copy of the contract. Like also what other parents have said, we didn't get a public hearing, I guess, to discuss it either, so maybe that is something that we'll come and we'll get a copy of the contract so we can actually have something of substance to compare less to this, to know what the changes are and everything else. And one other thing I wanted to mention is, if we are going to discuss his contract, there's something called a Rice Notice, which the Board cannot discuss an untenured teacher's employment without first giving the untenured teacher's formal notice of the intention to discuss his or her employment and the opportunity to require that to be held in a public forum. This notice is referred to as the Rice Notice and derives from the Open Public Meetings Act of January 2021. So if he wasn't giving that, I don't think we are even allowed to discuss his contract without his approval first.
Thank you.
Three minutes, right?
Three.
Okay. Alan Asart, Brandon Avenue. Yeah, public performance reviews really sting, but even private ones do. But I found some characteristics about what an effective superintendent is. Because of the time limit, I can't say them all, but I'll do some. An effective superintendent is transparent. Now, I remember at a previous board meeting, I remember hearing that the Wayne Schools don't use Common Core math. I was confused and sent an email, and the reply I got was, "It's not Common Core, it's called New Jersey State Standards." This despite the fact I took scans of the book and showed that the entire book has Common Core written all over it. This isn't being transparent, it's being lied to and not being held accountable for the 30% Wayne High School student failure rate in math that was told to us at a previous board meeting. A great superintendent has a clear vision for the district and focuses on student achievement and is passionate for helping students fulfill their potential. A+ for having the vision, but F- for the vision itself. The district's mission statement went from making sure each student could achieve his or her academic potential to making sure every student has the same outcome, no matter how much or little they work. Use the Wayback Machine online and see for yourself what the website said. How does any of what we and see for yourself what the website said. How does any of what we debated here over the last two years help students fulfill their potential? It doesn't. A great superintendent isn't afraid to take risks. During COVID and all our debates about masks and the sex ed standards, even if it differed with his personal point of view, not once do I remember hearing, you know, "You may have a point about this controversial matter," or, "I hear you and I don't like what the state is making us do. I'm going to work with the Board and let's see what can be done." Instead, it was excuse after excuse and hiding behind lawyers in the state and making sure a box was checked. An effective superintendent has compassion for the situation. An ineffective superintendent is always making excuses. A great superintendent is a good manager. Now, even if a manager accomplishes many good things, which he has, it doesn't mean that person's a good manager. And here's my simple evaluation of this characteristic. Why do I have to keep an attorney on retainer to fight to get my child everything she needs for her IEP? That starts at the top. Though I'm not always here in person, I've been involved for two-plus years, unlike the new boss coming in to evaluate the employee he inherited. In my conclusion, status quo and collect resumes. To our Board, I hope your minds weren't made up prior to today's meeting. The Board needs to remember that it was voted in by us to represent us and our interests and what we feel is best for our kids in the Wayne Public Schools, not what the Board feels is best for them and their individual and political interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We are going to make the superintendent's contract available to you in the back. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Can I have a move, a motion? Mr. Tal, Mr. Peter Dano. Thank you.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to reconvene now and we are in public session or comment on the superintendent's contract. Mr. Robertson, sir.
Is this on?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, it's on. All right, my name is Norman Robertson. I am a Wayne resident. First, let me say, if you could give out the contract tonight in hard copy, you could have put it on the Internet as well. I don't understand why that wasn't done. And I think that everybody on the dais who thinks that that's sort of a surprise that that happened tonight, please ask why. I didn't get a copy as a practical matter. We were told they were in the back. Went in the back and all there was was agendas. And up front, the rest had been handed out, so I didn't get one. I'll probably borrow from somebody here. But obviously, I haven't had a chance to take a good look at it. I'm not here to talk for or against the contract. What I would encourage the board to do, and I have encouraged, and I always encourage them to do this, and that is to ask questions. The first speaker tonight raised a number of questions, and that's a good thing. But for instance, there are too many things that are done too routinely on this board. That's what I've seen over the last year and a half. And these are just some of the questions that you could be asking. Did you ever ask, when it comes to the public notice, and that was mentioned tonight, and I know notices were given of tonight at 30 days and at 10 days for the hearing, which is the way you're supposed to do it? Whether this is an actual hearing or not is another story, since it seems to be one agenda item. But did you ever ask what went wrong with the public notices given in the fall? That did not happen. The board is obligated to wait until the county superintendent approves the contract before they can send out any notices pursuant to the regulations. That wasn't done. And one of the questions you should ask is why wasn't that done at that time? Because it leaves the board open to challenges that they wanted, that some people wanted one board to do it rather than the new board to do it. So you can ask about that. Have you had sufficient time with the contract to be able to study it? Not just here at the meeting. Personally, I don't think it's really a good idea at all to have a public hearing on something minutes before you're being asked to vote on it. That's not fair to you, and it's certainly not fair to the public. Did you ever interview the superintendent as part of your policy? And I'm not saying, I'm not talking about cross-examination. I'm saying, did you have an opportunity to interview him? Where you could say, what is your opinion on this? What is your opinion on that? We've already had several concerns that have been expressed by parents. If I were extending someone's contract, I'd want to know his answers to those sorts of questions. Did the new members especially have a chance to work with the superintendent so that they understand how he works? Did one person maybe have it, maybe not the other person? Matt's in an enviable position because you had an opportunity to work with him previously. But that's not the case. So people with only a couple of meetings under their belts are being asked to make the most important decision, and this is understood throughout New Jersey, most important decision you can make is whom you hire as superintendent. Were you provided with all the letters and emails that went back and forth during the negotiation period? No member of this board did the negotiations on the contract. Do you know what went back and forth? Were you provided with all the letters? Excuse me. Did all of you have the opportunity to evaluate the superintendent? And did you have an opportunity to take a look at the evaluations?
Mr. Robertson, your time is up.
All right, well, that's fine. You know, that's not a surprise.
Anyone else from the public wishing to comment?
Who do rock, paper, scissors back there? See who got us up next. Cindy Simon, Rats Road. I just, oh, I'm short. Oops.
Just hold it, sir.
I gotta stand on my tippy toes. As you consider extending, voting on the superintendent's contract, I'd like to offer my thoughts as a former board member who has been through more than one superintendent's search. Superintendent searches can be long, time-consuming, and even disappointing. The perfect superintendent is not out there. I implore the board not to let the perfect be the enemy of the great. I think every board member, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, at some point has talked about transparency. Consider as you vote tonight what specific fact-based reasons you will give for your decision. I suspect those who vote in favor of the superintendent's contract will cite its accomplishments, many of which have been mentioned here tonight as well as circulated around town. I suspect they will discuss the importance of a steady leadership at a time when their town will be increasing in population by almost 20%. I was too lazy to do the exact math. And a time where the school board is considering a significant referendum to address current needs, never mind what the population increase will bring. For the board members who may be considering a vote against the superintendent, what will your reasons be? Would they be that you agree with those parents that oppose the following state mandates related to things like masking and the health standards? Okay. But if that is your reason, what you're saying is you want a superintendent that will break the law. Would they be that you oppose a superintendent pursuing a board goal about diversity and inclusion that parents said we needed? Because if that is your reason, what you're saying is you want a superintendent that will ignore what the board wants and parental concerns. If your reason is what has been stated by some parents up here, such as the superintendent and board discussing teaching second graders masturbation, or having a board goal that said everyone had to have the same outcome, well, then what you're saying is you want a superintendent making decisions based on misinformation. I assure you, the superintendent and no member of this board ever talked about teaching second graders masturbation. That's not even in the state standards. As for the goals, I remember that goal. The word is equity. Equity doesn't mean same outcome. And clearly, that was not a goal of the board because my daughter's not getting the same grades as all her classmates, and neither is my son. All equity is, is the blind student getting extra time on her test so she can compete against everybody else. All equity is, is the English language learner getting additional help learning English so he or she can compete. All equity is, is making sure that the child who can't afford breakfast gets some food at school so that they're on an equal footing. I implore the board, please choose to keep this current superintendent. He's not been perfect. I can find things to criticize, but he's done an excellent job, and he has tried to work with the board and the community, even when the community has come forward presenting information that has not exactly been accurate. Thank you.
I want to follow up on some of the ideas in my--
Sir, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Don Chala, Twin Cherry Way. I want to follow up on some of the ideas that were just expressed and just echo the sentiment that the reality of a superintendent change right now would not be pretty. The instability that our great teachers will be thrown into if they lose their current superintendent, how many of them would we risk losing if we choose that path? Ultimately, that instability would be passed down to the students, and it'll reverberate through their academic performance. It's a tough labor market out there for teachers right now. We've saw it in the hiring data that the administration presented to the board a few meetings ago. Beyond those numbers alone, there are many factors that make being a teacher now more difficult than ever. I hear it from my friends and family. Teachers are expected to do more with less student effort. Teachers are expected to compete with the billions of dollars that tech companies pour into addicting young people to their devices. Even in the near term, it's scary to think about the impact that new developments in AI may have on students' ability to cheat through their schoolwork. Teachers have to shoulder all of this. It's a tough job, and this board should do everything they can to support the teachers to make their jobs, their work easier, more manageable instead of more difficult. I want the board to incentivize Dr. Toback to work to do better in areas that need improvement. I want the board to reward him in areas where he has succeeded, like rising SAT scores. In my opinion, that's a pretty big deal and very commendable. I want our community to acknowledge that finding another superintendent is not an overnight process. It is a transition that would be imperfect, extremely rough, and unwarranted as things currently stand. And if we're all, if we all acknowledge that Wayne has a history of short superintendents in the past, even if we find a new one, how can we guarantee that they're going to have a long tenure? Dr. Toback has stood with us right now through thick and thin about nine years, and I hope he continues to do so, and I believe we should be grateful for what he has done so far. Let's move forward. Please renew the contract so we can spend our valuable time working on issues that matter to the students today and just generally not more bureaucratic shenanigans. Having said all this, I'm glad we're having the discussions about contract renewal and opportunities for improvement. I agree that I've, I certainly agree with what I've heard about how the district is handling special education. I'm not an expert on the issue, but in the past, I've heard that parents are not happy. I've heard it from both sides. The administration should spend their time working with the parents of special needs children in particular going forward, assuming they are not doing so already. I want to thank the Board of Education. I want to thank the administration and the teachers for their hard work over the last few years, and we're going to need that grit going forward now more than ever. The educational success of all the students in our school, and I said this before, is in part dependent on us, the community, to empower our district's educators to do their best work. I'm happy to see parents and educators united and in agreement--
Sir.
--that in order to be pro-education, you must be a pro-educator.
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal Shafano, 46 Normandy Drive in Wayne. I have to admit, I do not have a child in the Wayne system right now. However, I have two sons that were raised in the school system many moons ago, I have to say. Have an older son with two grandkids who went to Wayne Valley. And I also have a special needs boy, Michael, who lives with my wife and I, who's 35 years old and went to Ryerson. I can't speak enough of how much, how great the care was for him during that time. I went to my first board meeting, school board meeting, maybe year or two, I guess a year ago or so. It was one of the worst experiences I've ever had at a meeting in my life. I mean, and this isn't unique to just Wayne. As all of you know, it's a national problem. And what's been going on nationally has led to everything that we're seeing right now. There's an article in the paper about hate crimes increasing, and those are 2021 results. So we didn't even get 22 results yet, and that's another year. And you can expect another great increase in that as well. As some of you know, one of the things I'm involved with is political. That is, with a group during election season, we support our candidates by going door-to-door. And we're increasingly finding new residents. And whenever we find new residents with kids, I generally ask the same question as do a number of our volunteers, and that is, why did you come to Wayne? And inevitably, I guarantee, I can attest to the fact that 90%, I'm just throwing a percent out, but a majority of people came here because of the Wayne school system. And that is a testament to the man who's sitting there, whose contract you're looking to approve tonight. And why you wouldn't approve it is beyond me, after eight years of service, I believe, that he's done. And I've been doing political work for, say, five years, and that is the answer I've gotten every year. So, and as far as the accomplishments of what he's done throughout his tenure, I refer you back to Mr. Gottesman's layout of everything he's done so far, and how you can deny him another amount of service as superintendent is beyond me with his accomplishments and the fact that Wayne remains one of the greatest school systems in New Jersey and is nationally renowned as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Lyndon Ardone, 28 Pelham Road, Wayne. And I have not been to many Board of Ed meetings like the man who just preceded me. I was here for one or two over the past two years. And it has been a tumultuous time in education. And I'm only going to read this from the contract. I was only exposed to the contract tonight. But the evaluations of this person should be criteria adopted by the board, the goals and objectives of the district, which shall include encouragement of student achievement, the responsibilities of the superintendent as set forth in the job description for the position of superintendent, and the district's placement on the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Curriculum, and other criteria as the State Board of Education shall prescribe. And I think that what I've heard, if you evaluated him against that, it would be good. How you evaluate him and how the rest of the people evaluate him, because I'm not that familiar with it, I think he should be removed.
Suzanne Potap, Tuxedo Drive, Wayne. It's nice to see everyone this evening. I'm happy to be here in support of Dr. Toback's contract extension. It was my honor to be on the board for six years. It's my honor to teach in Wayne for 18 years before that. It was my honor to work on the board with most of you. The superintendent's contract doesn't take place in a vacuum. He's been evaluated every single year by the board while he's been in the school district. Has he gotten 100% in every category? No. But he has had excellent valuations each and every year. And it's true, you can't please all the people all the time. It's especially difficult when it comes to special education because it's a sensitive area. And unfortunately, like everything else that's done in the school district, we are bound by state statutes. And the legalities of it sometimes make it very difficult. And that's one of those areas that I feel great concern about, but in a lot of times, we can only do what the state allows us to do. Everything in the educational process is wrapped in red tape. This contract didn't come out of left field. It was done in accordance with the law. Last fall, we considered an extension to the superintendent's contract, but then we were told, because of the lack of time remaining in the year, that it was not a good idea because we were already in a lame duck session by then. So now we have a new board. Not all of you have had an opportunity to work with the superintendent for as long as other people on the board, but I'm sure that you have been given the information you need to proceed on his contract. I hope that you were given a spreadsheet that I worked on last fall, getting ready for the superintendent's contract. I tracked down information sources from everywhere, from NJ.com, Educational Publications, New Jersey Patch, Ferris's publication, and he did a nice article, by the way, on the superintendent in the schools. And I know it's time, but I'm telling you that what's in his contract is more than fair, especially in the comparison I did to what's going on in the state of New Jersey with other superintendents. And he does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Wendy Lemandry. I live at Eight Rose Terrace, Wayne. I think it's important that, I've heard lots of different things going on here, like if we don't, and there's a suggestion that Dr. Toback is not satisfied or doesn't feel appreciated. I think it's very important that everybody understands, we appreciate the job that you've done. I think it's equally important that everybody understands that the contract is not up for renewal for over a year. So this is the question. It seems to make so much sense to me that if somebody is not up for a contract renewal for over a year, then you wait till you get there. Is there always room for growth? Yes. Do we want to lose Dr. Toback? No. But there is this thing going around, I think that it's like I said, it's almost like an unspoken message that, you know, Dr. Toback is thinking of leaving. Has anybody heard that? I mean, has there been any indication of that? And what is the criteria? And who sets, who actually delegates or documents the criteria that somebody is evaluated on? You know? So I just think it's not as complicated as it seems to be that everybody's up in arms about like, oh, this or oh, that. It's very simple. The contract is not up for renewal for over a year. People are asking for a little bit more time to do their own whatever. The board, I guess, would also appreciate a little bit more time, not having to be pressured, unless I'm missing something. But that's all. Thank you so much for your time. I really do appreciate it, and I appreciate you, too. This must be difficult for you to sit here, right? I think it's actually unbelievable, but I think this whole scenario was created, honestly, and, you know, you can say whatever you want to say, but this whole scenario was created by the board, right? Because who brought us here to vote on this? And I feel bad for you. I do. I have compassion, and I feel bad for you. Do I think you work your butt off? Absolutely. The taxpayers have some questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Julia Hiljidardia, Wayne, New Jersey. I have been coming to this podium for roughly eight years. Not so much recently, but enough that Dr. Toback is aware that I freely speak my mind and, on occasion, have openly criticized him. One thing you can always count on is Dr. Toback to be calm and professional. I've sat in this very room through meetings that have gone well into the next day, while community members raged on about various topics, and he never once flinched. I've sat across from him in his office discussing how we could make full-day kindergarten a reality, expecting him to be dismissive, only to find him to be open-minded and helpful. I've dialed into virtual meetings, listening to him be repeatedly bashed for his handling of a global pandemic that nobody on earth was properly prepared for, yet they expected him to be. I've emailed him with a concern that was repeatedly ignored by another staff member, expecting to be rightfully low priority, only to have my email responded to same day by him, and a personal phone call within 30 minutes from that staff member that ignored me apologizing. Someone else said, we're going to get a reputation for being hostile to superintendents. I don't think we need to be afraid that is going to happen because it's already happened. Clearly, he can easily find a job elsewhere and likely with a lot less aggravation. Dr. Toback is a steady and dependable captain at the helm of the complex machine that is our district. We don't need to take our district in another direction. Some things might need work, but whenever things need work around here, it's been my experience that Dr. Toback is open and honest about it. He's exactly the type of employee that we want to encourage to stick around. I think extending his contract is fiscally responsible and the responsible thing to do for the health of our district. The last thing our kids need as they experience their first completely normal school year in over three years is a district influx. Extending his contract now ensures stability in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Seeing nobody else, I'm going to move to the second.
It's going to go ahead with our presentation.
A point of information. May we ask counsel to opine on some of the comments made in regards to notice of this public hearing?
Sure. Notice was provided for this hearing, completely in accordance with applicable statute, the 30 days as well as the 10. Some of the other questions that were raised, the contracts that are required to be, they are to be provided here. There is no requirement that they be provided at a certain timeframe or via a certain method, such as the website. Sorry, I'm just going down some of the list of the comments. I'm sorry. But all aspects of this contract, from the negotiations of it, through the approval with the executive county, through superintendent, through the hearing here tonight, have all been in accordance with applicable statute and law.
Dr. Toback?
We're ready. So previously, I talked about the importance of our system of district goals and how each represents progress in the Wayne Township Public Schools. Tonight, we're going to share information that shows more progress now and also for the future for our special education programs. Tonight's report is a critical part of our first district goal for this year, which is expanding and refining special education programs pre-K to 12. The goal was to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment utilizing an outside organization, and tonight, we're sharing that assessment. Next page. Thank you. So there you can see a little bit of information about why we would need to do a needs assessment. So on the surface, you could see that there's a lot of things that were considered. One of the things, of course, is that we have growing programs. We have also the possibility of significant construction, so we have to really start thinking about what the future of Wayne will look like and how we'll address the needs of our students. What kind of enrollment trends will we have? What kind of increases are we seeing within our current school population? So those are all important reasons why we have to develop a multi-year plan. The other thing is that by having an outside organization look at our programs and look at our districts, we get that external perspective, which is also very helpful. Because after a while, you develop kind of a feeling, it's like when you own a house and you have someone come over as a guest, they notice things that maybe you don't notice in your house. And so that's part of the reason why you have someone from the outside come in and take a look at, in this case, our school system and our special education programs. So in public education, it's actually fairly rare to go and request or look to have an outside organization do a review of your school district. It requires a certain amount of bravery for the staff because ultimately, you're very vulnerable, right? There's all kinds of things. You don't know what the results would be. If you go to the next page, another important part of that external-- If you go to the next page, another important part of that external review is that it has to be specific. So if you go through that list, everyone can read what's on the list, right? Evaluate our in-house programs, our district placements, available space, recommendations for new initiative about how to expand the district's special education program, assess our current staffing levels, which of course is extremely important, and consider professional development, and also talk to the staff. So that's a very important part of this process, spending a significant amount of time talking to the staff during visits and hearing what they have to say about our program. So the next part is our timeline. And so you can see that in the fall and the early winter, our consultants made visits to our schools and our programs, and spoke with numerous staff members. In January and February, data was analyzed and a report was constructed. In February, we reviewed the initial draft with Stages Consultants, and our team shared a final report with the Board of Ed. Tonight, we're sharing the recommendations from that report. And another represent, I'm sorry, another presentation will be made in the coming week, and Dr. Sur will be talking about that in a few minutes. Right now, what I'd like to do is ask our consultant, Lisa Schlier, from Stages Learning, to take over the program.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Wayne community. Thank you, Dr. Toback, Donna, Ms. Reichman, and Dr. Sur, thank you so much. So as Dr. Toback mentioned, my name is Lisa Schlier. I work for the company Stages Learning. I came into this position, I just resigned last year as an assistant superintendent in a school district here in New Jersey, and I guess you can say retired. And prior to that, I was a director of special education, not only in New Jersey, but also in Hartford, Connecticut. So I came into this organization, you can see right here, this is our Stages Learning team, who helped, we all put our heads together and wrapped ourselves around the Wayne community to develop this comprehensive needs assessment. You have on the top left there, our CEO, Angela Nelson, who was the founder of this company back in 1997, with her colleague Cindy Bowers, who's our COO. And then the woman on the bottom left is Dr. Michelle Nutini, who came to Stages Learning the same time I did last year. She was the program coordinator in Philadelphia Public Schools for over 400 of their self-contained programs. And then, of course, myself in the middle, and then our other partner, Dr. Carrie Stubbs. So thank you. Before I go into kind of the nuts and bolts of the special ed needs assessment, I just would be remiss if I didn't point out to you, all of the board members, community members, and even members of here of the district, what a phenomenal opportunity we had, and what an experience it was coming into your schools. Everybody across the district was so welcoming. Every teacher met us with open arms. Every administrator greeted us. They were so excited to sit down and to talk to us and share their experience here in Wayne, that it really made our job very easy. The students, of course, were amazing. I mean, who doesn't love watching a student work and smile, and just seeing the teachers being so nurturing and caring? The professionalism was seen across the board in every, every school that we went to. Everybody was excited. They were thankful for this opportunity. It really shows this community that your district and your Board of Education care about your students and want what's best for them. So it was really an honor to be here. Commitment, your teachers give so much of their time to these children, along with the paraprofessionals. That came across very, very high in all of the observations we had in the classroom, the discussions with the administrators, the building principals, district staff. Commitment by students, staff, your community, professional learning, your commitment for your teachers to provide them the best professional learning. It was interesting, and I want to just point this out. Oftentimes, when you're running a district, you're thinking about, what can I bring into the district to help support our teachers? You're always looking at, how can we put the best people in front of our children? Oftentimes, as administrators, we don't stop and ask ourselves, well, what do I need to get better? So when we met with your administrative staff and asked them, they were like, this is a great question. So it was wonderful. Everybody stopped and took the time, how can I make myself better as a leader, to make sure your kids have what they deserve? Right now, we have some issues facing our nation, not only here in Wayne Public Schools, but across the country. I have an opportunity to travel from the east coast to west coast and meet superintendents everywhere. And unfortunately, right now, what we're seeing in our, in our school systems is an increase in our referral process. You know, and you're seeing it here in Wayne. Our special ed numbers are rising. Our retention to keep our teachers in our buildings is stressful. So not only are we seeing it here in Wayne with the increase in referrals, special education numbers, but it's everywhere. And then last, but lastly, when Dr. Sur goes over the recommendations, I want you to keep in mind that really what these are, is they're opportunities for growth. You have a lot of growth that you have here in Wayne, and the teachers are looking for professional development, and your district was so responsive right away that some of those initiatives have already happened. So it was great, an honor to be here. And I'll kind of go into more now. Thank you. There you go. So we had three different data collection methods, to make sure we analyzed all the priorities that the district superintendent and the team developed. So the first thing we did, we did our programmatic observations. We went into 26 of your self-contained programs. We looked at data. Dr. Sur was so amazing with giving us all the data that we had. We looked at your numbers, we looked at your referral numbers, we looked at students in your RTI process, we looked at students in your current self-contained programs, and unfortunately, sometimes, we're bound by statutes, you know, in 6A14, that if some of our special education programs get to capacity, we have to then open up other programs. But how do you open up other programs when there's not space? And you know what's coming in your community, and this is part of the reason why this evaluation was done. And then also, we did 30 structured interviews with your staff, child study team members, some teachers, and admin. So these were the three areas that we looked at. Again, like I said, we looked at 23 self-contained programs, and we went into 26 classrooms. Every single classroom we went into, all 26, was amazing. The teachers, you know, we're vulnerable, right? We let people come in, especially outsiders, and it can be nerve-wracking. All of your teachers were so excited. One of the hardest things, I think, though, about being an evaluator, is coming in and not getting your hands dirty. Trying not, it was so hard not to go sit with the kids and like talk to the teachers while you're in there, because so much energy and such great things are happening. So that was one area that we absolutely loved. We can go to the next slide. So part of the interview process, those are all the individuals that we interviewed. Every single individual that we interviewed were asked the same questions. And we came up with the questions along with your team. So we met and thought about, what are the things you want us to look for within your programs? What are the questions you want us to ask your staff? What do you want us to ask your administration? So a lot of our questions in the interviews were centered around the programs, how effective they felt the curriculum was, how much professional development they felt they had, any areas they had. What is your goal for your kids? What is a goal for your programs? So these are all the questions we asked the same people. Next slide. We did not take a look at your in-class resource, your, so your push-in model or your pull-out resource for disruption of the learning environment. Right now, our focus based on your priorities was really looking at your self-contained programs. That's where the bulk of our work was. And just so the board and members of the community know, not at any point in time did we ask for student names. We never read an IEP. That's not what we're here for. There was no confidential information shared about your children, and I think it's important for you to know that. During the classroom observations, we looked at five areas. So our report is centered around place, people, practices, procedures, and product. So when we went into the classroom, the observations we looked at for the place was, we looked at the instructional space. Were the instructional spaces conducive to the children's learning? Could they navigate around the classroom freely? Was there, were there belongings? Did they have their own space for working? What was the structure of the classroom like? People, we looked at, when oftentimes when you're working in some of the self-contained programs, you can sometimes have more adults than children. And when people walk into our room, oftentimes, there's lots of people coming into our classrooms. We need to know, as an administrator, evaluator, perhaps a substitute, what exactly going on? Where are the schedules in the classroom? Can I come in and easily find out what's going on? So we looked at that, the structures and the roles and responsibilities of personnel. Practices, we paid attention to what was happening. Were there any evidence-based practices occurring? Meaning, if students were having a challenging time or needing additional support, what type of reinforcement were they given from the teacher? What type of positive feedback were they receiving? And also, were there any interventions taking place? Students that may require a, you know, a token economy to help with their behavior? Were those systems and structures in place with the practices? Procedures, how did the children transition from one activity to the next? Were there clear routines and processes happening? And finally, where are the products? We took a look at your materials and resources, looking to see what manipulatives they had in the classroom. Did the children have materials to help support the curriculum and to make progress within their IEP goals? When we looked there, these are what we looked at. We chose three different areas. One, if we saw something, it was a three, that means it was there, it was completely evident, it was part of their best practice. Area was scored a two, if it was moderately evident, if we saw it. And then if we did not see it, if it was not evident. And what's important to know about that, that sometimes when you use this scale, if you had a lower score, that doesn't mean it's not existing, it's just at that moment in time, it wasn't visible to the eye of the observer. So overall, here are the key findings. The majority of the findings in every of the areas we looked at in the 5P were completely evident and moderately evident. One of the areas that we saw that needed some, an opportunity for growth within our programs, was really making sure that the staff had all of their schedules and the structures and the routines visible to the classroom environment. So we had, we're in a program, and so if I walked in, I should be able to go up and see, okay, there's the schedule for this individual, I know where they are. And that helps build capacity and continuity within your practice. The interviews, like I said, we had the same question, open, we had some closed questions that were scored. We looked at, for example, if one of the questions were, how effective do you feel the overall curriculum is to support the program? It was either very effective, effective, somewhat, or not effective. All the questions were scored the same way. And based on the outcomes of that, I'm going to let Dr. Sur tell you about the opportunities that we have for growth here in Wayne. So thank you.
So Lisa touched upon a number of these. For the recommendation to support priority one, was to establish opportunities for the special class program staff to meet and develop schedules, which she had mentioned, set schedules for all students and staff within the programs. And this allows a continuity of instruction and capacity building among the programs. We have programs among all these buildings that build over grade level and different needs. So this would allow the continuity across all of those. Consider offering PD. PD is professional development, that's learning for our staff. Support new and developing staff on ongoing behavioral concerns, increasing student independence, which is very important, and other areas that arise throughout the school year. Establish a system to document and analyze the materials and resources used within the special class programs. Lisa had mentioned about the products piece. To examine their effectiveness, ease of use, appropriateness, to determine if additional curricular resources or professional development is needed, back to that education. And continue to assess the need for additional space among each school to develop, plan to bring students back to school, back to the district to be educated in the least restrictive environment, and especially, we call that LRE. Looking at the recommendations for, to support priority two, is to develop clear criteria that support IEP, and IEP's individualized education program teams, to best utilize assessments and data when we're deciding whether students need a more restrictive learning environment, such as the self-contained placement. Identify students who can be in least restrictive environments, that's always our goal, with higher student-to-teacher ratios that will reduce the demand on existing classroom space. And improve placement criteria are being developed systematically, visit all at a district placement to identify students who are ready to serve, to be served in district when appropriate. Looking at recommendations to support priorities three through five, to develop a robust program profiles that clearly articulate the specialized interventions and supports available within the continuum of special education programming offered by Wayne Township Public Schools, including the self-contained programs. Develop guiding criteria to support IEP teams in making recommendations regarding the assignment of one-to-one aides, shared aides, and classroom aides, otherwise, and a lot of times in Wayne, we call them paraprofessionals, in order to, again, promote independence. That's a very big goal for our students. Develop district protocols and procedures that detail specific supports and interventions that can be provided as part of the New Jersey Tier Support of Systems, NJTSS, based on the core components of multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. And by developing MTSS procedures, the district will be prepared and equipped to handle the removal of the identification of specific learning disabilities by July of 2027. And for the last ones, develop and share whom to contact, so we have more of a clear communication among staff, so everybody's very clear on the roles and responsibilities for our special education staff. Develop a set professional learning community, which Lisa, you know, had spoken about with, you know, providing opportunities for learning and growth, to create that schedule for the 2023-2024 school year, for specialized program staff to identify strengths and areas for improvement relating to student performance on assessments, instruction, and IEP progress monitoring. Create working, create a working document that outlines a number of initial and triennial review evaluations for each case manager, as Lisa had alluded to, that we are, you know, seeing a dramatic increase in referrals, so that the administrative team can help identify where additional testing support is needed, and where we can divide the work among personnel. And last but not least, clearly define the roles of paraprofessionals for each program.
Great. So as part of the recommendation process, and looking at, and looking at all your numbers of students that are currently in district, and then knowing that you're increasing your community with new housing, looking at, like I talked earlier, the statute where there's a requirement, when a classroom gets to a certain level, you need to either apply for a waiver, or you need to open up a new program. And so in order to be proactive to handle the number of referrals you have here in district, I'm making, I made the recommendation to your administrative team, that hiring an additional school psychologist is a really smart thing to do for a district. So a school psychologist, as most of you know, can really manage four, four roles in a district. One, they're a child study team member. Two, they help out with the evaluations for students in the cognitive-intellectual area. But oftentimes, school psychologists are also trained to handle educational evaluations, which can help offset some of the burdens on our LDTC, child study team members. And also, they provide support and counseling for our students. You know, not, not only are we seeing an increase, of course, in what I talked about in your preschool referrals, but we're seeing an increase in some of the mental health issues along the secondary level. So having additional support staff on hand to help support those students when they're in need is, is, would be tremendous. The same would go for a school social worker, another part of a child study team, that really is the face with the families when they come into the district. They're the ones that during the initial evaluation, do the family interview, they find out all the necessary components to the family dynamics, do the social history interview. Also, another member that can provide supports and services for your child with regards to counseling supports. And then, because your district is increasing and your programs are growing, you are going to need another self-contained teacher to take on the role of educating our students when our class sizes are too big. And the last thing we talked about was building a parent-to-teacher program. You have so many paraprofessionals in your district that want to learn and are so excited to really understand intricacies of what takes place with, you know, IEP development, understanding students' disabilities. So working with them to create here in Wayne a parent-to-teacher program would be phenomenal. And lastly, because, you know, your district responded immediately to that need for the paraprofessionals and your teachers, who wanted that training, who wanted to help understand the challenges, and sometimes, understand what it's, for students with autism, what are their learning challenges, challenges they have, and how can we best meet their needs? So we've already done three professional development series here for your district. There was a need, and your team reacted quickly and responsibly, and had really good feedback from your, from your paraprofessionals and your administration and your teachers. So that, really, that's the nuts and bolts of our comprehensive needs assessment. So I want to thank you, Wayne community, for allowing us to come into your schools and, and sharing your buildings with us. It was a wonderful opportunity, and thank you to the Board of Ed. We were honored to be part of your district, and, you know, we feel like family now. So thank you. Thank you.
So we welcome our Wayne CPAC and Wayne SPA families to March 23 at 7:00 PM at the Anthony Wayne Middle School. We would love to see you there. It would be our, we'll pack it in, it'll be our biggest meeting yet. If you, and until the meeting next week, you can have access to the report for the LinkCNA report, and you can already give immediate feedback by using the QR code that will go through Let's Talk. So thank you very much.
So then, the next step in our progression will be to take this information. We have our presentation next week, hear additional feedback, hear feedback from the board, and our traditional way of kind of moving along and making sure that we meet all of the recommendations, is to now develop a written goal, so that way we can move ahead next year, taking on the different, different challenges that we face. At this time, we'd like to open things up for the board members. If you have any questions or anything that you want to talk about, please feel free to do so.
Mrs. Wentec.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Have the parents been surveyed who are part of the special education program yet, or is there a plan for the parents' survey, so that we have full 360 picture of the program? Or is there a plan for the parents' survey so that we have full 360 picture of the program?
Parents were allowed to provide feedback through the Let's Talk app. Is that, I didn't hear, sorry. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, I wanted to, I guess, know if part of this process was a survey of parents and their feedback so that they can provide valuable, meaningful feedbacks.
So any feedback that, that was given to us, we gave to Ms. Schlier and also to the administration, so that could be a part of all the information that was looked at and all part of the data.
But, sorry, did the parents know that, that their feedback would count as a part of this process? Was that, was that made clear?
So the answer is that, Mrs. Schlier attended the CPAC meeting. I don't remember the date.
It was back in November, I think.
And so at that point, she talked a little bit about the, what was happening and the purpose of basically the study. We also have our upcoming meeting, right? This is just a starting point. This is basically looking at what we're doing in school, right? The next part of this is to meet with parents, to hear their feedback, and to also share that with the board. So there's, there's more to come. This is, like I said, this is a starting point. The purpose of this study is to look at the five Ps, right? That's what we really needed to do. So that was the, the goal at this point.
Thank you. So we invite parents now to join the Let's Talk app, and if they have feedback, they can certainly go and provide you with that feedback. Great, thank you.
Mr. Pachalkas.
Yes.
I have a question for Ms. Schlier. Based on your observations so far and your expertise, your expert opinion, would you be able to rate, rank, or categorize our district versus others that you've observed?
You know, districts vary, as you know, in size, right? There's different needs in different districts. As far as your district ranking, I really, you know, I meant what I said in the beginning, looking at these opportunities for growth. If you looked at the recommendations that Dr. Sur pointed out, a lot of them were procedural, which is why that area in the people, as far as the, the structures, the routines, the schedules, the protocol, those are simple things that can be done. A lot of the feedback we received from some of the families, I'm not families, I'm sorry, the staff, is that professional development that they were looking for, that they, which is why we looked into doing the three sessions so far we've done. Also, an area that we looked at is really looking at the criteria, looking at how can we help support the needs of our students by creating independence among, among the programs? Ranking your district compared to other districts? I can't really do that. I mean, you know, Wayne, Wayne Township Public Schools is its own special place with its own needs. Every districts have, every districts have opportunities for growth, areas for recommendations. So, you want a grade? You want an A?
That works.
You want an A?
I want an A+.
Yes, A+. Yes. It was, I, I, you know, we really meant everything we said. It was a really great experience. Your teachers work so tirelessly, and it was so evident by everybody that we met and watching all your adult support staff and the programs, and just the level of energy and the excitement everybody had. They were so excited that the board agreed to do this, that their voices were heard. That was a resounding feeling across every building. So for that, you get an A+.
Mrs. Gazette.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to talk about this exercise. I think it was a very important exercise. Our student population and the needs of our students changes from year to year. So it's important that we, every five years or so, assess any major program in this district. And it was certainly time to do this one for multiple reasons. As I just stated, the changes in the needs of the students, which was all taken into consideration, the upcoming influx of new population with the building that's going to be going on in Wayne. And what was pointed out was like you just stated, mostly procedural, a lot of professional development, in-house cleaning. But as someone who's been around as long as Dr. Toback and a little longer, this is my 10th year on the board, I've had many opportunities to work on contracts with our paraprofessionals, to sit in the room with them, to listen to how much they care about our students. I mean, I would pay them 10 times more if, if the money were there to do so, because they're, they're the ones that are really in the trenches, day in and day out, with these very needy children, for the most part, especially our, like our LLD or MD programs. They just do such an amazing job. And I've learned so much over the years from them by listening to them during those negotiation processes and just seeing them, you know, around the community. And just recently, there were a whole group of them from the ECC that attended a soccer skills camp that was being done for free by the Wayne Soccer Club. And when I walked in and I saw some of the people there, familiar faces, and, you know, I got my hug and hey, and how you doing? And then I'm like, what are you all doing here? And they're like, well, we all volunteered. We all volunteered to come and do this at night on their own time to make sure that those kids had a wonderful experience at that program. And I, I just can't say enough about them. So if they want a few extra hours of professional development, which they'll be doing on their own time, most likely, then so be it. We'll provide it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you've done. And sometimes it's very hard to bring someone in from the outside to take a look, because sometimes you open a can that you don't want to open. But I think what you found here are areas that are not major issues.
Correct.
But there are some issues we do need to address. And that's why it's perfect time with the budget.
Well, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
So at this time, we're going to move on into a presentation about our 2324 budget. Mr. Moffett.
As the superintendent suggested, this is the tentative budget hearing. This is basically a discussion on what will be submitted to the Department of Education on a timeline that's prescriptive and outlined by the state of New Jersey. So go through it. We have a quick overview. Again, I'll give you some background. Some of the big challenges this year were a couple, couple things. Obviously, we have salaries that are approved every year, but we've been talking internally about getting back to normal. Getting back to normal past the pandemic. It still has a tail, and we're dealing with the residual effect on the student education side, and we're also feeling it on the health, healthcare side as far as increasing healthcare costs. So that, that was a big issue this year. And it's to get that base also established, a reestablished base so that we can project off of to carry us into the next few years. So those are pretty big challenges this, this budget cycle, is just trying to get back to a normal-based budget and move past the pandemic, identify services that we want to continue, identify other services that we do not need anymore, and then project into future with salaries. So we do do that with a very strong financial position. As some of you have seen, after you've attended the last couple of meetings, we had our audit. We've got a solid, clean audit, a very positive outcome, again, going in, in through the pandemic, but now we get to build off that. So we have a healthy surplus, which is a 2% surplus that we can carry. It's a 5.8 position, so that's, if there's any unforeseen events that occur during a year, we can utilize that to offset any unforeseen budget increases. We have a capital reserve. The board's has been very active in depositing into not only the capital reserve, but establishing and maintaining and making annual deposits into the maintenance reserve. As, as you've seen, as you've attended, we've approved withdrawals from that fund over a series of meetings during the year to address some of facility needs as we move forward. But that capital reserve stands, again, at this past June, at about $7.4 million, and the maintenance reserve is 4.8. So those, these are solid positions to be in, because not only does it allow us to address not only our capital needs, like an expansion of a, of a classroom if we need to, renovations, and I'll get into a little bit more as it comes to regular operating district grants. But this allows us to do a lot, to address a lot of our needs as it deals with our aging facilities and some pressures that we have with demographics. So some important dates, what we comply, again, this is something that's a timeline established by the Department of Education. But the, the big thing right now in November, obviously, it never ends. I say that every year. It's just a constant cycle. So November, December, we sit down internally, start dealing with base school budgets. We ask for the various schools to start working on their salary and non-salary budgets, but mainly focusing on their non-salary. We build that, we add the departments in, and we, with a target date of about March 2, the governor releases state aid usually 48 hours after his budget message, which came exactly 48 hours, almost to the minute. So we reported out at the last meeting, the last meeting was March 2nd, was our first input on the budget. Today is the second input on the budget, and it's going to allow, a vote tonight will allow, if it's approved, will allow my office to complete the package and send it in for review by the Department of Education. That's due to them by the 20th. They review it. It takes them roughly a month there to get back to us as a district, April 20, where then after they approve it, we can then go and do more detailed advertising of all the information that's part of that budget. Once that's presented and approved, we have another hearing. That hearing for adoption is May 4. That's the final step. Then, then the tax levy piece goes to the municipality to finalize the tax bills. So influencing factors. So last year, we had a significant increase, or at least a projected increase in health benefits. It was basically 30%. After a discussion with our broker, we, we shopped it around. We found that there was a significant savings that we would receive if we moved to the state health benefits. It was significant, and it allowed us to do some structural changes to our budget. So we were able to identify some areas that needed additional resources as it related to special education, specifically in the tuition of professional services, like one-to-one aides at, at a district placement. That, just that adjustment, again, to this year's base, that's about $1,003,000 we're projecting to the end. So we've made a structural change there. Transportation, which is also related to the special education expansion. We, we needed resources there. We were able to accommodate that. We expanded the, the police coverage at all our facilities, so we were able to make a change there as well, increase the existing coverage amount. We increased that by about half a million dollars. And then, of course, employee benefits. So not only were we able to save a little bit, but, well, I shouldn't say little, it was a substantial amount of money we saved, but we did have to address an expanded health benefit package. That was something the district offered all employees across all lines of professional positions, including union-covered positions as well as non-union. And it allowed us to address some of the issues that related to the collective bargaining agreements. So again, we, that was about $1,002,000. And then we had some various other coverage issues that we decided to make adjustments, knowing that COVID, the COVID impact was still being felt, so we had to address some overtime, substitute costs, and other contractual items that came up as we entered that year with that savings. So this year, so that's this current year, so now we're projecting forward, and the big, the big two ele, I call them two elephants. First one is increase in salaries. This is a 3% average across the, across the all groups, including non-contractual salaries. So that's, that averages about 3%. And you're talking about an increase, right? So now we shift to state health benefit, right? And then we get a bill that says now you get to go up 15% in the next 12 months. So that was the next elephant entering in the room. That's about 3.9, pretty close to $4 million. That is close to, we'll say 7.2, which is, as we'll see in a minute, basically exactly the, the revenue number that we have available in our budget just on those two items alone. Okay? So we adjusted a base, and then we had to increase moving forward for salary and benefits. Now, I've said on the bottom of this in yellow, these are other things that we had, we have needs for, that we're still addressing with some of the salary increases, the 3%, so it does open up some other areas. But these are things that are needed, that still could have been added to the budget that didn't really make it in at this point. So again, student services, we still see a need. Again, I, I talked a little bit about a budget cliff the last couple of times. The ARP and ESER funds, although it's fantastic to have additional funding, it's a one-time source. So anything that you want to continue with, you have to find it in your base budget. So these are some areas that we just weren't able to address fully. Again, we were able to address it through some other areas of our budgets from savings and, again, with the salary lines. So student support, same, you know, related to student transportation and expanded educational programs that we anticipate, and a continued need for mental health services. That's not to say that we're not offering them. We do. Again, we have ESER and ARP funding that is still available, that will carry us into next year, that will provide resources for mental health and guidance counselors. We have guidance counselors full-time at the high school, and we have part-times at the middle school and elementary school. So those are some of the things that addressed, that are in ARP and ESER funding. So I talked a little bit about revenue. So here's what the, the board has at its disposal. So the first is the tax levy. That's the base. That's a base 2%. So that's $3.2 million. We had an increase in state aid, which is about $1,007,000. We have available bank cap. That's unused taxing authority from prior years. That's the 796. We also are eligible for two automatic adjustments to our tax levy cap. The first one is for that increase in, in health benefits. So the, the Department of Education has a formula within their software that'll calculate that based on your, the cost of health benefits to the district, and that, that adjusted, the adjustment to tax levy generated 1.1 million. And then we have an increase in anticipated students. We had about 125 this year. We expect another 125 next year. So that available to us, again, is an automatic adjustment to $516,000. And that is roughly the same amount as the prior page. So what are the initiatives? Right, again, so this is our base budget. We have a recurring funding for various different educational programs that change from year to year. So these are a list of some things at the, I would say more the department level, the district level. There's obviously other resources built into the schools, but this is just overlaying initiatives at the, at the central office level, I'll call it. So we have iReady at the middle school at $63,000, a K8 multi-tiered system support system, which is $75,000, K2 Wilson GOs, which is, again, I get educated when I do the budget too, on the new educational programs. But these are library, it's a library program with readers that are decoding. So these are young readers that are decoding language. K through five sign subscriptions and renewals, $46,000. We have Spanish textbooks at the high school level, $20,000. Calculus textbooks also at the high school, $15,000. Two new elementary teachers. We, we estimate about 150, that's combined both. And an expansion we anticipate at the preschool, which we have resources available, about $21,000 for that. Other things that we utilize from year to year is lease purchase application. We do it through PCIA, which is a county program that allows us to do a five-year lease-to-own type of program. We've done this every year. I've been here, I've been here for over five years, and I think it's been probably about 10 years I've been using, probably more than that. And it's similar areas. So the first area, we've been able to build additional resources in the past, it's been about $500,000 for the one-to-one computer program. We were able to increase that to 750 this year, and that's how each grade level is broken out. We have two new lift, again, 22 passenger buses. These are student transportation, smaller buses with lifts for chairs, wheelchairs. So that, the two of those will go for the $256,000. We're looking at three new 24-passenger vans. Again, these with the increase in special ed routes, it's, it seems like there's a little bit more of a push on the van size vehicles. Again, three of those are about 279. We're, we are in need of a service vehicle, that's $65,000 for transportation, two facility vehicles, roughly 100, and then other sundry equipment needs that we have that will be able to put into that lease purchase application. Again, these are all cycles that you have. You have cycles of computers, cycles of vehicles, cycle of facility vehicles, things that, when they get past their useful life, we, we replace them. So I talked a little bit about reserves at the beginning, maybe a little bit smaller. I guess I could have put two slides together, but there is a lot of work that we've been able to do with the capital reserve and, and the maintenance reserve, and I'll just, in a nutshell, try to go over some of the capital reserve. Again, I, I talked a little bit about the ROD grant. So by having money in the reserves, we were able to utilize that as like a, I'll call it like a down payment for the application. So you had to come up with a local amount to cover the project to make it eligible for state funding. So by having money on hand, being able to identify a, a project quickly, we were able to submit it to get up basically no less, if it's eligible, no less than 40% back. So that would be money that 40% is eligible, will come back and go back into So that would be money that 40% is eligible, will come back and go back into the reserve. So that was, in my opinion, something that we were able to utilize, and again, it goes into really good planning, the board has established these reserves, and this is one of the ways you can leverage those reserves for additional resources, so, so some things that we've done in the past, and these are things, projects you'll probably start seeing over the summer into next year, Randall Carter toilet room, that was a withdrawal, APT toilet room, that was another withdrawal, that's actually on tonight's agenda, James Fallon toilet room, again, that's a withdrawal from capital reserve to cover that. We anticipate the next year of the Next Generation Science Lab program, these are science rooms that the district has committed over several years to address, like two, I would say, science classrooms, to remodel them and bring them up to, up to date, and up to new standards. So we anticipate another $2 million project there, and that'll switch, we're doing hills this coming year, and then it'll go back to valleys, this will cover the valley, anticipated withdrawal. The ROD grants, as I stated earlier, so you had two things, so not only did you have ROD grants, you have another item that they were, it's SDA ECC-type money, so there are fundings, a funding source available for early childhood, so it's kind of like a ROD grant, but it's really more focused on an early childhood center, an expansion of that program. So, again, that was another subgroup of the ROD grant that we were able to apply by having reserves, so we've identified the Preakness window roof and facade project for that, as well as the elevator and ADA upgrades, again, that's a Preakness school, if you're familiar with it, you have a newer section, that's a one-story, and then you have like a two-story older section, this is really going to pertain to the older section. Now, maintenance reserve, again, is another reserve that allows us to do a lot of things that we were talking about going, the business office is going virtual, and a satellite operation next week, so this maintenance reserve allows us to do that, we had a withdrawal for 825. James Fallon facade, that was also eligible for ROD grants, so we submitted that, TD roof project, again, ROD grant, APT roof, ROD grant, and Ryerson is a partial roof, because we had a larger section redone, so this will finish that off, and then Wayne Hills High School Guidance HVAC repair, Wayne Hills chimney flue was going to be addressed, as well as ScholarCoFAX communications upgrades, again, these are dollars that we've been able deposit to use in the future year, so, again, those are significant projects, and I think a lot of other districts, I know, I'm a little biased because I'm here in Wayne, but I think if I went to other districts, they'd like to have reserves like we have. I am biased. And I tell a lot of bad dad jokes, sorry. Yeah, I know, I gotta liven the group up, I think, I think I'm putting them to sleep, but anyway, here's a pie chart, school budget resources, again, this is where the money comes from, so the big section of blue is local tax levy, that's where you get it, and you get a little bit in state aid, which is 8%, so it's a significant, it's always telling, you always want to show, I mean, that's what happens, that's how you fund education in the township of Wayne. And these are how, the other side, so you have revenue, now this is where you spend the money, and we kind of broke it out by grouping, so the big sections are unemployment benefits and academic programs, right, and then followed by student support. And this will be available on the website for tomorrow, so if you need to refer to it, you can check back with that during the day. I do want to point out that we didn't do this by salary and benefits, if we did, the total salary would be about, it's a little over 80% of our budget is salaries and benefits. This is the impact on the average and some other assessed valued homes, 229, 781 is the average, that's updated to current information from the township, that's the annual for $100,000, it's $89 a year, 200 is 137, 158 is the average, 206, 275 for the 400, and then 343 for the $500,000 in assessed value, and you can see it on a monthly and daily rates. So the summary, what's being submitted, so you have a tax levy increase, that moves from 161, 787, 486 to 167, 494,264, that's a 3.53% increase in the tax levy, again, that's the 2% plus the automatic adjustments and bank cap. State aid formula, again, is $1.7 million, that's an increase roughly a little over 13%. We get a semi, which is a federal program, is about $137,000. Total operating budget, now that's significant because that is where most of the day-to-day activities are funded by, and that piece is the 183 million dollar number there. There's not much of an increase when you look at the budget, but it has more to do with an accounting of prior year's withdrawals from reserves, but it's 183, that's where it stands. Non-public programs, which is funding from the state in New Jersey that flows through our books to our non-public providers in town, if they are in Wayne, we track that money and we administer that, so we'll send them out to the various parochial and private schools. We have federal aid programs, which is, we have the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which used to be called No Child Left Behind, we have that, which is the big federal program, as well as IDEA, which is used basically for special ed funding, that's 1.2 million roughly available. Charter schools, we were advised this is something we have to put in our budget if notified by the state, we do not have any charter school students placed in any charter schools at the moment, so there's no offset for appropriation for that. We do have a debt service tax levy, which is from a prior bond sale and referendum that's running off in the next couple of years, that's automatic, that is a separate debt service tax levy that's provided to us outside of our budget, it just automatically comes over the time period the bond was sold for, so that's part of it, which brings the total budget of $187,753,772. So that goes into the Department of Education, so if approved tonight, I'll go, we've prepped it, ready to go, there's a couple of other documents we have to finalize, we send it to the county office, again, it has to wait for their approval for us to do the major advertising and provide information, that's where we'll run an ad in newspaper, make a lot of other information available on our websites, user-friendly budget, but it is subject to change, there can be some back and forth with the county office, say county office could ask us for adjustments or make changes, so it is something, that's a tentative preliminary budget, and it can change from now until budget adoption, and we would then have to notify the general public that it has changed. Other than that, that ends the presentation, I'm open for any board members.
Any questions by the board? Mr. Persakos.
Yeah, Mr. Persakos, can you explain to the public and the community the fiscal year, when it begins and when it ends?
Okay, so our fiscal year is a little different than a municipality, it's different than a calendar, so it goes from July 1 to June 30 every year, so it makes us a little different, so when you, if you're, so when the taxes are collected, it's a little off, so taxes are usually on a calendar year, and then there's a budget from the school that is split over those six months, so they, it's staggered, so that's where, did that address your question?
Anyone else? Mr. Patel.
So to piggyback off of what Mr. Persakos said, when you talk about, since we are in the state health benefit plan, the state releases their numbers off a calendar year, which would be in the later part of a year, so we have to make those adjustments ahead of time, so we don't have a negative impact to our budget in regards to that, and we should expect those numbers probably in October, maybe, before open enrollment?
We could, this year it came in pretty late, I would say it came in, I guess they first hinted around December, it came in pretty late this year, I think we actually got it in December, but we should get it sooner than that, but yeah, that could be the timeline, again, there's this long process that happened this year, because there were so many challenges to why there was an increase, and they have a broker that does the reserves for that fund, and they took a long time to explain why the 15% increase was there, so it kind of got pushed back a little bit, but I would say October would be a good timeframe.
And then in October, we are, even though we're going into 2024, that would be the rate for all of 2024, would that be the 15% or the 15%?
Right, so the 15% came up this half, and it comes up the other half, right, so you do the six months, and then the other half comes in the future.
Correct, and that's why it's important for us to be prepared as we move ahead with this budget, to have those funds available to make those payments to the state health benefit fund.
Yeah, we've been advised by our brokers to expect a similar increase next, for the next 12 months.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Persakos.
You're welcome.
Mr. Persakos, revisions to the agenda?
Couple items tonight, under our administrative, we're adding number two, excuse me, approval of Community Affairs Committee, recommended action reads as follows, resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the Board President to begin planning to form a Community Affairs Committee with input from the administration and district professionals, according to current district policies and regulations. The Board President will provide a future action for board consideration, which will establish role, scope, member composition, and chairperson. Moving on, there are revision under T Emergent Human Resources, T1 will revise number two, which is Deborah Unger, resignation date from March 31, 2023, to March 17, 2023, and moving to the last two items, under X Emergent Legal, X1 will add approval of HIB determination, and that reads as follows, resolve that the Board affirm the superintendent's decision on HIB case number 71 backslash 2022 dash 2023, following an appeal as required by NJSA 18A colon 37 dash 15 parentheses B parentheses 6 parentheses E. Adding X2, approval of HIB determination, that resolution reads as follows, resolve that the Board affirm the superintendent's decision on HIB case number 98 slash 2022 dash 2023, following an appeal as required by NJSA 18A colon 37 dash 15 parentheses B parentheses 6 parentheses E. That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. At this time, we're open to the public on agenda items only, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens to comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter, comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student, the Board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board, other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mrs. Gazan, Mr. Patel, anyone from the public?
Good evening, Board, Michael Godisman, Independence Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. First, I'd like to compliment Mr. Persakos on his presentation of the budget, the only concern I have is the following, and I know we do have a mental health program in our schools for our students right now, but we all know that there has been a dramatic uptick in mental health issues with students, not only in Wayne but nationwide, I'm hoping we can find some funds to, more funds to put into that program, because we most definitely have been seeing an increase. The other thing I'd like to speak of is the HIB report and HIB situation, I make note of the fact that Mr. Faber was up here earlier in the meeting, speaking about the bullying that his students have been experiencing, and how long it's taking for that to get resolved, I'm sorry to hear that, I think we have to put more emphasis on getting those things resolved in a more timely manner. Many of you know that I'm the founder of the New Jersey Public Education Coalition, I've been traveling to many districts over the past few months, attended many meetings, and I can tell you that HIB problems are not isolated in Wayne, they're going over the state, I can tell you that there's one district in Somerset County where in one year it went up 200%. I have to think that part of the reason this is happening is a lot of the modeling that we've been doing of divisiveness over the past couple of years, it does have an effect on our kids, shows intolerance, shows a lack of acceptance in areas where curriculum is designed to teach acceptance, and it unfortunately sends a bad message to our kids, and in particular, a bad message to an already at-risk community, the LGBTQIA+ community, a community where suicidal ideations and suicidal attempts and suicides are far above the general school population. One of the things that I am working on, along with the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights, and hopefully the New Jersey School Board Association, is the Division of Civil Rights offers three two-hour training modules that deal specifically with LGBTQIA+, issues that may arise in the school setting, it is an informative training that tells us more about the specifics of gender identity and gender bias and what have you, and the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, I have taken these training courses, they are enlightening. So we're working with the Civil Rights Division and the School Board Association to make these mandatory for all current school board and future school board members, the big six hours worth of, worth of online training. So I would like to challenge this board to get ahead of the curve, to take that training now before it's mandated, so that this board can actually...
Mr. Godisman, your time is up, sir.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Janie Martu, Jay Wayne, I have, oh, this thing don't like me. Okay, oh, okay, I have a couple things to say about the, like, the special ed program. There are a couple statements, I have a couple friends of mine who are parents of children in the program, and there are a couple things, they want to have a couple answers to different things, and I've heard of stories over the past few years of many things that are going on, and parents who have to take the, I guess, administration to court to get things done and so forth, so a couple things are, why do programs sit on the admin desks for months without getting approved until the parents either go to Dr. Toback to push it through or go to court? Why don't teachers just read the IEPs and follow them? Why are teachers saying they are special ed certified if they're not? Yes, the teachers do care about these children, but they do not follow the IEPs, and there's one other thing that they need, they need more caseworkers at the elementary level, for years they have been asking, there is one for every three schools, and that isn't enough, and the parents that I am referring to want me to state their names, that they do have a lot of questions and problems, and they, I'm sure you are aware of them, Danielle Pino and Stefania DiMaio.
Thank you.
Hi, again, Alan Asarch, Wayne, so it was a very good presentation about, you know, about the special education, it really was, and thank you for doing that. I don't know if, I know these questions aren't necessarily for the board, but I was just wondering what they think the reasons are for the increase in students, you know, for special education in early elementary. Now, I know that, you know, there are definitely kids who have, you know, real diagnosed disabilities, whatever they may be, and I understand that, but again, it also just makes me wonder, is it the curriculum, is it this common core stuff that even parents can't figure out? And, you know, what I've noticed is, once my child started with her IEP, now she's excelling and doing better in math and reading because she's learning it the old way, so we're really pleased to see how she's doing, and am I allowed to give a, like a shout-out? It has to do with special education, and I'm glad Dr. Sir is here, you know me very well. But I did want to recognize the entire special education staff at, the teachers and the specialists and the paras at Randall Carter, they need to be recognized publicly because they have done an outstanding job for me and my daughter, I became one of those parents, I didn't think I'd become one of those parents, but I did, I email and I call, and they know who I am, but, you know, they reminded me, as I'm worried about bothering, worrying about bothering them, that I'm advocating for my child, and I really took that in, and I'll always be an advocate for her, but they really are all remarkable people, can I say their names? Is that okay? I think they should be recognized, Dr. Thompson, what's that?
As long as you're not defaming them.
No, I don't think I am. Dr. Thompson first, a great hire, by the way. She's wonderful. Ms. Dooley, Ms. Glenn, Ms. Laporta, Ms. Guzzo, Ms. Rosa, the para. And, yeah, I said her. So my child is doing well. So let's continue to make this grow because it's, at least for me, it's working. I know people have had their problems, and I had a fight, fight, fight. I fought. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Donalds, Wayne. Two quick things. So on the financial, on the finances, I saw where there was a HVAC for a building. What did they say it was? It was $825,000 for HVAC. What was that? For, oh, central office. What is central office? What is that? What's the...
We'll answer you later.
Okay, because here's the problem. My son always comes home and says, and he goes to Lafayette, that he's hot in the summertime. So if we're going to give the guy, the folks in the office, if that is what it is, central area, I think we should put the kids first. That's one. Two, there's a lot of folks on special ed which I think is absolutely wonderful, as far as making sure kids who are in need get the help that they need and the proper funds are put in place to hire the proper professionals to do that. However, I have one exception. We need to be careful and not over diagnose kids. First of all, it's not your responsibility to over diagnose them anyways. Because I sat through a particular parent-teacher conference, and they tried to tell me my son had issues, and my son is an eight-year-old boy. He's an eight-year-old boy. And I expect him to be an eight-year-old boy. I expect him to get in a little bit of trouble. I expect him not to want to learn. I expect him not to want to do everything else but learning. That's an eight-year-old boy. That's normal behavior. So one, my point is, let's make sure we don't try to push parents to put their kids... It's basically the inverse of the scenario. Let's make sure we don't try to pressure parents to put their kids into programs because the teachers don't want to grind it out with that child. Sometimes teachers have to grind it out. There's another, the child doesn't have a learning problem. The child's just a child. Okay? So let's make sure that we keep that in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Pam Nasek. This is a little uncomfortable. We've had some amazing information on the special needs programs and goals and a lot of valuable information on the budget. And then we have this, the white elephant about the contract. And now that we have it, but we don't have sufficient time, how do we get our questions answered? Because I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer always, but from what I'm reading, I do have questions, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So are you just going to vote on it tonight? Because my three minutes...
Can I ask your questions right now?
Okay. Why would his, why does this year have to be prorated? Was his salary insufficient? Like, these are just uncomfortable for me to just shoot off the top of my head. I don't have it articulated well. I think that's important. It's a very personally, you know, situation, someone's employment. And I don't want to be disingenuine or speak inappropriately because there wasn't really enough time to do, look at the numbers and understand the percentages and how did this go with the budget. Ultimately, the taxpayers, again, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, ultimately taxpayers are the employers, right? You are the negotiators for the employee. And so there's questions. And I just, on the spot here, you know, want to shoot them all. I never heard of someone being able to go into their own file, and if they don't like what's in there, destroy it. You know, if there's something they deem inappropriate or maybe unfavorable. So again, I don't want to misread it, or I don't have enough time to do this. The, I want to understand about the liability. There's statutes. There's so much here. I was trying to pay attention while I'm pulling this out and looking at it, and it's just egregiously insufficient to ask and articulate appropriately my questions. So, gee, to have a seat at the Board and have the right to speak but not vote on all issues before the Board in accordance with the applicable law. The superintendent shall attend all regular and special meetings of the Board, except where a rice notice has been served upon the superintendent notifying him that his employment will be discussed in closed session, and the superintendent had not requested that the meeting be conducted in public or where the superintendent has a conflict of interest. So that poses, was a rice notice served? Did he in fact give permission for this discussion to take place? In what I questioned earlier, is it an appropriate hearing? And if he did, then why weren't the contracts made available initially before we had to ask for them? So this is all a bit discombobulated, and I don't want to think that we're, I just want this done appropriately and be able to have my questions answered. And I don't think I'm the only one. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to go into executive session to discuss a personnel contract matter.
Second.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just to pour order, what is the reason for exec at this point?
Want to go back to executive session, so that way we can discuss a contract, a personnel matter?
On a legal standpoint, or...
Board and legal.
Because I thought we just had a legal...
We have a legal...
Legal opinion.
We had a legal opinion, but I want the Board to make sure that they have all their questions answered.
Calling, roll call. Mr. Baddishill? Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kazan?
No.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlik?
Stay.
Okay, we'll be in exec. We will come back out, and action will be taken.
We're back. Counsel, I'd like for you to address some of the issues that have been brought up.
Sure. You know, we just want to make sure the public feels comfortable that this entire process is in accordance with law and has been done properly by the Board and the district as a whole. Initially, the Board has had plenty of time to review the contract. While, you know, it may be a newer thing that some of you are seeing for the first time tonight, the Board has, I believe it's at least four times, four meetings, gone through the details of this agreement. So they have had time to review and process and are in a position of being able to make, to vote on it tonight, should they choose to do so. In part, that is because the superintendent contracts are extremely regulated. And so here, there's very minimal change in Dr. Toback's contract from the initial contract. Really, almost nothing, other than the dates and the salary, have been changed. We have complied with law in holding this hearing tonight. There is no requirement that the hearing be separate from the Board's regular Board meeting. As long as the opportunity for the public to be heard is provided, there is no reason or no regulation that requires that it be done separately. And finally, because the public was provided with a copy of the contract tonight to review, there is no other requirement that it had been provided before. We, the Board is willing to provide the public with the opportunity to continue to review and to provide questions tonight. That opportunity was provided, and so they're certainly open to any other questions. They realize the significance of the act they're going to take tonight. Thank you.
Can you address the race notice issue?
Sure. So the race notice is not an issue here. As we've discussed, it is a public, it is required to be a public hearing. That makes it somewhat different from other personnel actions, which generally are required to be taken privately. This is a little bit of the reverse. Dr. Toback was also, of course, on notice that the Board would be taking action tonight.
Thank you. It's time to have a mover for the agenda.
I'll move the agenda as a whole, but I'd like to comment on the
We'll have a comment.
Before we actually have a vote. So I'll move the agenda as a whole.
Mr. Second, Mrs. Kazan. Comment.
Just one point that might have gotten missed, but I wanted to let them know, just to make sure everything is clear. With the superintendent's contract, this contract is sent out to the county superintendent and has to be approved before this can be done. This was done last fall. This has already been in place. And honestly, people worry, why not push it out the next year, push it next year? The clock is ticking. If you really want to look at this from a sports area, we've got an unrestricted free agent over here, and he's an all-pro, and we need to, if we lose him, we got problems. So, again, I was out for the entire year before this and was brought back in up to speed within two meetings. We've had four since then. If we kick this can down there anymore, it's gonna be dead and it's gonna roll into the sewer. So this has been checked, double-checked, and rechecked. And we're confident in what we know, whether we vote yes or whether we vote no. We know what we're looking at here, and it hasn't been sprung on us in this case. Thank you.
Mr. President, before anybody else takes my thunder that I spoke in executive session before.
Thank you.
Let me go on record here. I don't, I don't know if any of you know exactly what I do for a living. I'm a career firefighter, and I don't expect you to understand what I'm going to tell you right now. But there is a thing called, in the Fire Department, a thing called spaulding, okay? Concrete does not light on fire. Concrete is a solid structure that does not ignite. It doesn't. Except, a phenomenon occurs when intense fire heats up that concrete and the water molecules inside that concrete explode. Prior to Dr. Toback coming to this district, we've had five superintendents in five years. We're in the heat of a fire. That man has been here for nine years, in the heat of a fire, through a pandemic, everything you want, whatever you want to call it, and has not spalled at all. There's no reason that we shouldn't renew his contract. We're talking about bringing him to the levels of other people's, other superintendent's contract that are in the same size district that we have now. You guys might, you, the public might not agree with the way we're moving on this. We've been talking about this for, prior to the election in November. We held it off so it didn't seem that we're doing it in lame duck. And anybody on this board can correct me if I'm wrong with anything I'm saying, by all means. We held on to it till we had the new Board members that were elected and here for four meetings and spoke about it each and every time. It's been talked about, discussed, and now's the time that we're voting on it. The reason we're voting on it, to answer some other people's questions, is because if we don't do it now, why are we doing, the question was, why are we doing it now when there's a year to come about of it? The reason is, if we wait until that year's up, Dr. Toback could be looking to go somewhere else. Do we really want to lose Dr. Toback? I've heard time and time again, why are we, why are we doing it now? Not, for all due respect, Dr. Toback, we like what you're doing. We're doing, you're doing a great job. Everything's great. So if we wait and he looks somewhere else and goes somewhere else, where are we? We're right back where we were, five superintendents in five years, in the heat of a fire with spauling concrete. Management pillar here. I approve his contract, wholeheartedly, with no doubt in my mind. Thank you.
Mrs. Kazan.
Mr. Duffy just outlined the reason I ran for the Board. I watched the revolving Mr. Duffy just explained the reason I ran for the Board. This is my 10th year. They had a new superintendent when I arrived. He quit within my first year. I sat through the interviews for Dr. Toback, and I'm happy to say, we've been able to keep him all these years. And that's not just a testament to him, but a testament to a Board that was sick and tired of the revolving door, and finally got their act together and realized how to have a good relationship with a superintendent, not to micromanage, and to let the man do what he was educated and hired to do. And he's done an exceptional job. I'm very cognizant of what's necessary for the taxpayer, for the parents, for the students. I've heard it all over the years, and I think he delivers in spades on all levels. Have we always agreed? Mark? Hardly. But you know what? I'm not here just to get everything I want. I'm here to negotiate and compromise and work together and make sure that we have a good working school district. So yeah, I'm not willing to wait because the way the contract is set up, we would have to let him know by December of this year whether we were keeping him or not. And if we tell him in December, no, he only has until, what, a few months later to find himself another job. Why would we do that to such a wonderful man who has put so much time, energy, blood, sweat, and tears? I mean, I can't even tell you what we went through during the pandemic. This man was working seven days a week into the evening hours, dealing with contact tracing, and not just him, all of the administrators. I was talking to him seven days a week. I don't get paid. But as Board President for those two tumultuous years, we spoke daily, weekends included. I mean, never a complaint from him. This was the job, and he stuck with it. So there's no problem here for me. Obviously, I'm a hard yes. But there was one other item on the agenda, and it's a policy that's being renewed this evening. I'd like to read just the first sentence, because a lot of people talk about the Board and canceling meetings, and we're not available in transparency. But this is the law. These policies are written based on statutes. We don't make them up, and we don't get to have poetic license with them, because they're there for a reason and they're done a certain way. "All Board of Education meetings shall be in public, and each Board shall hold a meeting at least once every two months during the period in which the schools in the district are in session." So we are truthfully only obligated to be here once every two months. But yet, we had three meetings in February, we had three meetings in January. Now we're in March. This is our second meeting. We hardly hold back with regard to being available to the public and being transparent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Battersfield.
So, I spend a lot of my time building leaders, looking at people, watching the way that they work, how they come together and how they build teams. During the time, short time, I'll admit, that I have seen inside of Dr. Toback's organization and what he has built there and how he is managing the school system. He does a good job of building that school system. He does a good job of managing across the Board, across the things that he has. Where we need to spend our time is not on determining whether or not Dr. Toback is doing a good job or not, but as a Board, we need to spend our time creating a vision based on the feedback of the community for the school system and the way that it goes. And that's how Dr. Toback becomes more successful in your eyes. If you look at things like the district goals, he pulls those from the community, and we need to ensure that we drive him to make those better. That includes the special ed issues that we have, right? And the community and the parent-based information that we need to pull out of there to be able to push this forward further. It's that kind of way of being able to put the right vision and the right direction around the administration that lets him be more successful in all of our eyes. And that's really the issue that we have behind all of this, is that we need to look at the policies, the procedures, the vision that we create as a Board that helps him to be more successful that way. He is doing, when I watch him work throughout the entirety of the time that he's doing, he is referring back to the policies that are there, and he is following those policies. If those are not the policies that we as a community need to be able to do, apart from when they're driven by law, right, then those are the ones that we have the ability to be able to change the school system, to look at the school system. And that requires your input, pulling you back into this, getting the input back around, not just where you have an individual problem with something, but where there is a systemic problem with the way the policies are laid out that make it difficult for the children, that make it difficult for the school system, that make it difficult for the teachers, so that we can make those things better. And that's a lot of what we heard from the Special Education presentation today, about where there are changes we can make that will make this better for special education. And that's realistically what we need to focus on. The more that we hold back on that, the more that it doesn't get us anywhere.
I just wanted to make a few comments specifically to the contract that we have here, T-10 on our agenda. Was I happy about the process? No. I think the process needs improvement. If I'm here four years from now, you know, we'll work on it. Was I happy about the actual contract? I mean, it's, it is what it is. It's what New Jersey statutes allow. I would have liked some creativity. I would have liked to put some qualitative measures, some measurable criteria there, but this is, this is how it works in New Jersey. You know, do I agree with everything Dr. Toback has said and done? No. I mean, we're all human. We're all different. I've been on the Board for a year and a quarter. I don't want to spend a year looking for a superintendent. We have a lot of things that need to be done. We're at a critical period in the district. We have all these building projects coming in. We have issues where we want to keep staff. Staff retention is a big problem all over the country. I don't know if, I have a relative in the Anglewood District. I don't know if you guys know, the Anglewood Superintendent died tragically in November. Tonight, they actually have a Superintendent Search Community Forum. You know, that was in November. So we're talking March, and then they haven't even started the ball rolling. You know, they hired a recruiter. They have 2,900 students in that district. So I'm happy that the community showed up. The community needs to provide us feedback so we can establish the district goals. Those are what we evaluate Dr. Toback, our superintendent, on every year. So that's what we need. We need feedback. That happens in June. You know, June is when we evaluate him. So another thing about Wayne, you know, everyone's here because, you know, people mentioned the school district. You know, I've been here 15 years. All four of my kids have been in public schools. And, you know, to hire another, to find another superintendent, you know, we have some legal landmines that a superintendent would avoid, you know. So there are three legal landmines a superintendent can, that would want to avoid. Resoning is one, going for a bond referendum is two, and proposing closing a school. We have two of those that we're going to be facing in the next five years. So we need a steady hand. We need a steady superintendent, someone that's been here that knows, you know, where the skeletons are buried, you know. You know, there's going to be a huge learning curve, you know, to find another superintendent. So by renewing this contract, which I believe, you know, is very reasonable, it will allow us, you know, if we need to, you know, have plan for succession, but it will allow us to get things done. So that's, that's my take.
Anyone else? Mrs. Rigoloso.
So I'm just going to give you a little bit of information, the things that go through my head, and I want you guys to listen. So we have 1,600 employees in Wayne, 850 teachers, 15 schools, 7,500 students. Dr. Toback is very smart, and he knows our community. Let's work together as a community. Let's communicate, and let's tackle the issues that are important to me and to you. And I think we can do it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's time of committee reports? Oh, I'm sorry. The motion for the agenda to move. Any, no more comments? Roll call, Mr. Martin.
Right, I have it. Motion by Mr. Duffy, seconded by Mrs. Kazan. Roll call is Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Heck, yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wentic?
Yes, accept. Oh, number five, no on the IDE contract. Abstain from number nine. Abstain from T-10, and you two, no. Thank you.
And that's, yes, on all else. And that's, yes, on all else? Mr. Battershill?
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes to everything. I'll abstain on T-10 and S1.
Motion carries.
At this time, move to committee reports?
Excuse me, Mr. President. If I could ask for your permission for my absence, I have 1,000 pounds of corned beef I have to slice tonight.
4,000 pounds?
Yes.
I'll see you Sunday.
Thank you. You're good.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Mr. Fatale?
Thank you. Tonight, the Personnel Committee met consisting of Ms. Wendtig, Mr. Pavlak, myself, and Ms. Clark. We reviewed the minutes from the February 23 Personnel Committee meeting. We reviewed items on today's agenda, and if anybody had any questions. We spoke about non-renewal of non-certified staff members and possible RIFs. We reviewed the job descriptions of the secondary principal, secondary assistant principal, instructional, paraprofessional, and after-care program assistant. We also reviewed the hourly rates for the school year 2324 for the substitutes consisting of the teacher, office staff, and other positions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you. Tonight, the Facilities and Transportation Committee met with myself, Mr. Prasakos, Mr. Battershill, administrators Lauren Tibbets, Peter Romaine, and William Moffett. We discussed two of the resolutions on the agenda this evening, which have already been discussed as part of the budget discussion, items that are going down to the NJDOE for approval. We discussed the minutes, which were approved as written, the operations report. We're having an elevator issue at Wayne Valley. We're hiring a new company to look into that because the repairs are too frequent. The Pakinac Field unfortunately is having a lot of water flood issues, but we tried to abate that, and we were stopped by the EPA because of the water draining into the stream, which ends up in the Pakinac Lake. So, that may just continue to be an ongoing problem. It's an environmental issue, but we'll continue to discuss it. We discussed the facilities director asking each school for a set number of classrooms that need to be painted because there can only be so many done over the summer. It needs to be decided in advance, and the information provided to the Facilities Department. And good news is, last time I reported on people ruining our fields, this time, I'm happy to report that the field that they didn't remove the blanket on is beautiful and green and already needs to be cut. This is a field that was covered in a pilot program with a blanket seeded, and the grass was growing underneath it during the winter months, and it's open and ready to be used immediately. This is amazing. Very happy that this was a successful program, and I can't thank Mr. Romaine enough for bringing this to our district, and now we can try to implement it district-wide. But again, there's a cost involved. The projects we discussed were Anthony Wayne, JFK, and Valley vestibules, which are finally almost done. There was a supply chain issue that held up those projects. We discussed an ongoing camera project, and someone brought up the HVAC at Central Office, but HVAC does a lot of things, not just cool. We are having to repair that at Central Office, but the part of the issue with that is we have to relocate our staff during the months that this is being done because it's going to be done in the summer. So, these people work in the summer when the schools are closed, and it's hot as Hades. So, yeah, we're moving them over to Preakness, and there's going to be some remote work, and most of the Preakness school has already been retrofitted to have communications, et cetera, over there, and we're hoping to have that project. It'll begin on May 1 and hopefully wrap up by September. And there's some technology things that are going to be coming up on future agendas. Unfortunately, our transportation director was unavailable, but there's really nothing new there other than, you know, we're continuing to have a driver shortage, but we have four on deck because of our in-house C, what do you call it?
CDL.
CDL, thank you. I was going to say CPA, CRT. I don't know, just C something. We do our own driver training, and we have four that are just about ready to drive a bus. So, good news from the Transportation Department. Thank you.
Any other committees? None? We have retirements? Mr. Prasakos?
Mrs. Lori Romaine Gencarelli. Mrs. Lori Romaine Gencarelli began her teaching career at Bergen County Special Services, where she spent three and a half years teaching special education. After those years in an alternative middle school setting, Mrs. Gencarelli decided that it was in her best interest to interview in a district with more opportunity for growth. We were fortunate enough to have Mrs. Gencarelli join the Wayne School District in 1998, where she was assigned the position at George Washington Middle School as a sixth-grade English teacher and co-taught special education science. After seven years, Lori was transferred to the brand-new Anthony Wayne Middle School and taught seventh-grade special education English and co-taught science. After four years at Anthony Wayne Middle School, she was given the opportunity to teach at the highest level of academics in the district and was transferred to Wayne Hills High School. This is where she would end her teaching career. Mrs. Gencarelli will be very missed at Wayne Hills High School by both staff and students. You would always hear Lori's boisterous voice before you saw her, and her gregarious personality was enjoyed by many throughout the day. She was voted twice by both the students and staff for the teacher superlative in the Wayne Hills High School yearbook, "Teacher Most Likely to Brighten Your Day." Mrs. Gencarelli made learning engaging and fun, and her students loved coming into her classes. You could be sure if it was your birthday, she would be ready with a song and dance to make you feel special. Mrs. Gencarelli leaves a handprint on the hearts of each person she meets, forever impacting each of their lives for the better. Throughout her years at Wayne Hills High School, Mrs. Gencarelli has been involved in many different activities to enrich her students' lives. She has been a chaperone for many functions, a home instructor, an advisor for the future business leaders of America, and perhaps her favorite and most notable activity, the Voice of our Annual Spirit Rally. After 25 years teaching in Wayne, she is looking forward to life in retirement with her recently-retired husband, Mr. James Gencarelli, and experiencing all that retirement life has to offer.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
So, I'm honored to read about Linda Stoffels. Linda Stoffels has worked in the Wayne Township Public Schools for the past 23 years. She's worked at Tunisdi, Pakinac, Randall Carter, Ryerson, and Pines Lake. She has always been attentive to her students and an asset to the classroom. She has been a great support to the teachers that she has worked with, and she has radiated love and kindness to those around her. Linda has always been a positive role model in our schools. In her spare time, she has trained therapy dogs to support those in need. She also has volunteered her time at the Wayne Public Library to read to children with her therapy dogs. She will be greatly missed by the entire Pines Lake community.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
I have a long one. This is a little bit different than most I've read over the years. This was written directly, I believe, was by Mr. Leonard because it mentions George Washington Middle School and being the principal. So, it's not just a statement from his superior. This seems to be a little bit more personal, so I wanted to let everybody know that and send a nod and salute out to him. This is for Mrs. Sherry Finkelstein. "As each month passes and the end of the school year begins to show itself on the horizon, I unfortunately seem to find myself writing too many of these letters. While each letter is a course of celebration, it goes without saying to acknowledge that Mrs. Sherry Finkelstein will be completing her last four months as special education teacher at George Washington Middle School, and she concludes her 34-year career. 31 years have been spent at GW. For the past 11 years, I've had the pleasure to serve as her principal and experienced firsthand the connection and commitment that Mrs. Finkelstein has for her students, their families, and the staff at our school. I knew Mrs. Finkelstein was truly committed one 11 years ago on my second day as principal of George Washington Middle School. She stopped by the school to say hello and welcome, and then asked if she could have her class lists because she wanted to get ready for the year and make sure she knew all about all of her students prior to the first day of school. As the saying goes, consistency is the mark of a champion, and each and every year from that point on, Mrs. Finkelstein has always been the first staff member to stop in during the summer to begin preparing for the school year, and since our first meeting, I have been ready for her. It was no surprise that within my first few years at GW, she would be named Teacher of the Year. For those of you who've had the pleasure to work with Mrs. Finkelstein, you've been able to experience her unwavering dedication to her students. Her knowledge of math and instructional techniques have made her extremely successful, but what makes Mrs. Finkelstein truly irreplaceable is her ability to get to know her students and find ways to connect with them to ensure that they have academic needs met. While Mrs. Finkelstein was always known that her job was to ignite those learning light bulbs, she also knew that sometimes they just needed to be protected until they were ready to ignite. Mrs. Finkelstein is such a special member of our staff, and the same dedication and compassion she's had for her students, she also demonstrates to each and every one of us. I reflected my first meeting with her and how I enjoy reconnecting during the summer to exchange stories of our families. So many of us can also do the same, as we are so thankful for the opportunity to work with such a caring educator. As the school year passes by, and we have to accept that Mrs. Finkelstein will not be stopping by to check her rosters or meeting with her students for extra help. It brings us so much happiness to know that she'll be with the amazing family she has, and we'll be able to know when is the joy they bring her. Thank you for all that you've done for our school community. We truly miss you, Mrs. Finkelstein. Thank you.
Thank you. And to our retirees, we thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the school district over the years. This time, we'll open to the public for comments on general.
Sound mood?
Second.
Okay. Yeah. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding students, employees cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight under old, new business, or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Ma'am, are you coming up?
No.
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Second.
All right, any old business? Mrs. Wendtig?
Thank you. I would like to have a motion to send policy 0162 Notice of Board Meetings back to the committee to add language that would state, "Any notices given pursuant to this adequate notice provision shall also be sent to parents and others as an email blast utilizing the Wayne School email system." Thank you.
Motion on the floor to move the committee. Mrs. Rigoloso, seconded. Any comment? Mrs. Kazan?
Okay. This is the second reading on this policy. This policy has already been vetted by the committee that Mrs. Wendtig sits on. I'm not quite sure I understand why this wasn't addressed in the first reading, and now we're on to the second reading. And to make a motion that you want to send out emails to parents, well, this is a community of 55,000 people. These meetings are for everyone. Should we knock on doors next? Should we, you know, make personal phone calls? I mean, how in God's name are we going to inform everyone every time a meeting is on or off? That's what we have a website for. So, again, understanding the purpose of a board meeting, it's for the board to do its work. Yes, it should be in public, but it's not about the public or for the public. It's open to them. And I think we already go above and beyond with notifications. We go above and beyond the law. We have a tap into Wayne, who sends out a blast every time there is or isn't a meeting. I don't see the purpose to send, put more burden on our administration to send emails just to parents. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Moffett, roll call?
Motion by Ms. Wendtig, seconded by Mrs. Rigoloso. I'll call roll. I will need updated language before you leave. Thank you. Mr. Fatale?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
I abstain.
Mrs. Kazan?
No.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wendtig?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Abstain.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Abstain.
Motion fails.
Any new business? Board member comments? Old business.
New business.
Okay. Doesn't matter.
I'd like to make a motion to move the mission statement back to the Education Committee for review. I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None? Roll call?
I have Mr. Battershill as motion. Who's the second?
Mr. Fatale.
Mr. Giordano?
I abstain.
Mrs. Kazan?
Well, I don't have a problem with the concept of this motion. We have a process, and if Mr. Battershill would like the mission statement revisited, that's something he could discuss with the chair of the committee, and he can discuss with the administrator to the committee. And if that's something they deem necessary as a committee, and then make a recommendation to the board, then so be it. So, no offense, but I'm going to vote no.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wendtig?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other new business? Dr. Tobek, would you like to address anything this evening?
I think most of the questions that were asked during the meeting were covered, and at this point, I think I'm going to pass as far as any comments. At this point, I'll write to you as the board tomorrow, and I will certainly address the community as well tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Mr. Fatale?
First, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Finkelstein on her retirement. She's known me since I was very young, and she's an excellent teacher and an excellent community member, and I wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Second, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Tobek on his contract, and I think a vote tonight on his contract show that this board not only has faith in you, but has faith in your administration, and we have faith in Wayne schools. We are the voice of all stakeholders, whether it's the students, the parents, the taxpayer, the teachers, and the administration, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
I'm not going to still Mr. Fatale's thunder. Congratulations, Dr. Tobek. I do want to send a message out to the community because it's going to be recorded out there. I really want to know what those Boy Scouts thought about the debate that happened here tonight. We've been through a lot of these situations. This was a particularly important one. There were excellent points brought out on both sides of it, and I hope they take that home with them and understand that even if you have two opposing viewpoints, you can respect each other here and come to a conclusion that's beneficial for everybody. So, I'm very anxious that they'll get back to us and let us know what their final thoughts were when the community came out and spoke. So, good luck, guys, and thank you. Have a good night.
It's possible they won't want to be superintendents in the future.
Mr. Battersfield?
So, first, I want to say that last night, I was able to go and see the All Wayne Jazz Band, the choir, and the All Wayne Band as well. That was a fantastic night that was very well put on by the teachers, the Wayne Hills School, and mostly by the students, who really surprised me by how good everything was all the way through. It was very, very enjoyable, and they had a great time. On top of that, I want to thank Group 192 for coming along. I'm sure they're going to have some difficult homework to do on top of that and congratulations to Dr. Toback. And one other thing, putting the mission statement in is a great way for us starting to engage much more with finding out what the community wants out of this. Use the Let's Talk app, contact the board, get your things in about the things that you want to see in this community. Dr. Toback's now here for a long time, so we can go through and create something that really the community gets behind and Dr. Toback will be able to execute on. And that's really what I want to be able to get out of this. If you really want change, think about what that change is and how that change really impacts the community as a whole on all sides.
Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you. Lots to unpack tonight, but first and foremost and most importantly, I'm very happy you'll be with us for the foreseeable future, Dr. Toback. Some of the comments from the public I wanted to address, and unfortunately, Mr. Gunnell's left and I don't like to make comments of people who have left the room, so I'll reserve it, but maybe he could send me an email and I can respond to it, but he mentioned me shaking my head no, but I don't want to discuss that if he's not here. I want to thank everyone, pro, con, good, bad, or otherwise, for engaging in this process tonight. I thank you for coming. I thank you for caring. I thank you for speaking up. We need not less of this, we need more of this. As long as it's respectful, it's polite, it's factual, then we're all good because no entire community agrees on every subject. And thank you to the people that sent emails to the board with their comments regarding tonight. Keep it up. It's good and I appreciate it and I think it's healthy. So please continue with that. And I went to the Unsung Heroes event in Clifton. This is a countywide event that's put on by the County School Board Association where someone in the district nominates a student to be picked as the unsung hero for the year. And we had a student from Wayne Valley and we had a student from Wayne Hills. And these are not necessarily the students with the highest GPA, the best athlete. These are the students that despite adversity or difficulties in their lives or throughout their academic career, have managed to pull forward and excel and get to the finish line, meet their goals. And it's one of the best things, I think, that the School Board Association does with regard to students and Dr. Toback was there. And I just want to congratulate those two students for their honor at that event. And that's it. Looking forward to going home now. Thank you.
Mr. Prisakos?
I wanted to thank Group 192 from IHM for coming tonight. I wanted to give kudos and I previously gave kudos to everyone involved in Wayne Hills SDA. I passed them along to Dr. Toback, who hopefully passed them along to everybody. Thank you. It was great. I mean, Mount Olympus, ancient Greek theme, I mean, I'm all in, right? So it was great. They put on a truly remarkable production. And, you know, I tried to sit on the maroon side first and it was jam-packed, then I ended up sitting on the white side, so maybe I gave them some good luck, you know, and they ended up winning. But I was also at the walkathon for Nolan Peña last Sunday over here at Wayne Valley. Thank you to the organizers, they did a great job and, you know, we're fighting with you, Nolan. And Nolan is an Anthony Wayne Middle School student here in our district. And speaking of middle schools, they're rolling out their plays, so try to attend their plays. My daughter's going to be in one of them. She's going to be at Willy Wonka Junior next week with GW. And, you know, some of the comments here, thank you everyone again for attending, you know, yes, please advocate for your child. I mean, you know, we don't need to say this, you know, it's your child, please advocate for them and we're here to advocate for your child and everybody's child. So, you know, we like to have the community involved and community feedback. So, you know, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Toback and he doesn't know I'm going to say this, but I think the community needs to hear this. He does care for the staff, he does care for the students, and he cares for our district. When I write to him, you know, send him an email, and I've seen it when you guys write to him and he copies us, the board, with his responses, it's not a curt yes or no answer. You know, he actually puts thought in there and I appreciate that. I appreciate the thoughtful emails that you send. And I just want to wish everyone who's celebrating, Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow and Happy Greek Independence Day on March 25th.
Anyone else? Mrs. Rigoloso? Is your microphone on?
I'd like to wish Dr. Toback health and luck and we're happy to have you and we are so looking forward to working with you in the next few years. I would also like to thank the librarian, Linda Mandarino, at JFK and the fantastic principal, Kylie Myers, for inviting me to sleepytime on March 7th. What a wonderful event for the children. They dressed in their pajamas and they brought a blanket and their favorite stuffed animal and they listened to stories from the guest readers and it was a wonderful time for all. I think all the board members and Dr. Toback should join us next year and bring our pajamas and our blankets and listen to the nice stories the kids have to read. That's it.
Thank you. Just a couple of things tonight. We had a great night. We had a great night because we got a lot of input from the public and it was respectful. Everyone got to say what they wanted to say and everyone respected everyone's opinion. We've come a long way. We, tonight, were the first time in all my time on this board, we now have a community advisory committee that we're going to use in light of the upcoming referendum that we're discussing. As far as the composition of the committee, that's going to be coming out within the next few weeks or a month or so. You know, we're committed to appointing a wide range of community interests and background to this committee. We want to be sure that this committee brings us to a new level of collaboration with the community. It's never been done before and it's about time we did it. So stay tuned. There's more to come on that. As far as stability in any school administration, when I got on this board, we were a sinking ship and we were going down quick. We went through, probably in my first three years, I'm going to say anywhere between five and eight interim superintendents. And to let you all know what an interim superintendent does, they take the file from here and they put it here. I'm not making that decision. I'm not making that decision. For almost six years, we had no decisions being made in this district at all. And it wasn't good. You had 14 schools running 14 different ways. It was chaos. And you can talk, you can talk to the people who were here then, thank God for the teachers and the principals who stepped up and started taking ownership to things. We had no leadership. Over the past eight years, we've had stability. Stability gives you a lot of things. It allows you to implement a long-range plan. If it wasn't, our first, back, Dr. Gonzalez was our first long-term superintendent. He lasted three years. That was a long time for us because we had a reputation, nobody wanted that job. You don't want to come to Wayne. They're going to abuse you, they're not going to listen to you, it's not the place you want to be. I remember the consultant coming in here, Bill Librera. Bill Librera came in here and said, my first question to him, can you find us a superintendent? He said, "Well, you folks sitting up here have to change because if you don't, I'm not going to find you a superintendent." And he was able to find us, Dr. Toback. In my career up here, I probably did over 100 interviews with superintendents. Mrs. Kazan probably did 50. It was endless. We used to sit Saturdays on the board building from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon interviewing candidates. And it wasn't, it wasn't a pretty sight. Stability also has a positive impact on student achievement and staff. Staffing is difficult. People are running away from education today. They're gone. I see it every day and I see it here when I look at agendas, the amount of people we have leaving. And it used to be the other way. We used to get people from the business community coming in to teach. Guess what? Now they're leaving here, going back to the business community. Education is spiraling in a bad direction right now and it's not just Wayne, it's throughout this country. With stability, answers a lot of those questions and prevents a lot of those things from happening. So on that note, Dr. Toback, congratulations and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Fatale, Mr. Giordano?